Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting in order today. Welcome everybody here to our February the 13th, 2025 regular board meeting. Everybody that's in this courtroom, everybody that's online, thank you for coming. Our first order on our agenda today is the invocation by Pastor Lee Farmer. Pastor Farmer, thank you for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let me pray for you.
Yes, sir.
Gracious God, thank you for the blessings and opportunities to live in such a wonderful community. We thank you for all of our public servants here who take care of us and meet our needs. And I pray tonight, Father, as you guide this Board of Supervisors through this meeting, that they will make decisions that are good for our community as a whole, give them thoughts of wisdom and compassion as they make decisions that affect our lives. Pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Farmer. All right, pleasure, allegiance. Mr. Self, would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Self. One item, one thing I want to say, all board members, please speak into your microphones so everybody can hear tonight. Get that microphone close enough to you so everybody can hear. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to it? If not, can I entertain a motion to approve? Yes, sir.
Question. Were we going to consider moving the Great Wacomika Water Hazard, Old Great Wacomika Light presentation ahead of the other presentations tonight?
Yes. Yeah, it's listed as number one on presentations.
Oh, it's on number three online, sorry.
It's been changed. It logged back in.
It's been updated online, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Williams?
Motion to approve the agenda.
If you go out of just that meeting and go back into the meeting, it should refresh itself.
Well, second. All right, got a motion and a second. Who made the motion? All right, Jim, Mr. Long, you second it. All right, any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against, all right. Now, approval of the minutes. We have two minutes, gentlemen. One of them is January the 9th, 2025. That's our regular board meeting. Then we have January the 23rd, 2025. That's our special meeting. Any additions, deletions to those minutes? Chad, like, would you like adding one motion or in two separate motions?
If we could get two separate.
All right. Gentlemen, on January the 9th, 2025 board meeting, any additions or deletions to it? All right, can I have a motion to approve?
We approve. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. All right, the January 23rd, 2025 minutes, any additions or deletions? If not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against. All right, thank y'all, gentlemen. All right. Now, we're ready for our presentations. That first one is Great Wacomika Water Hazard. That's the Old Great Wacomika Light. Mr. Ames, would you be so kind, sir?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Glad to see you here tonight.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, did you want me to speak from down there?
Yes, sir. You're welcome to speak.
Fine, thank you. Thanks, thanks for having us. We're working on some slides that Wayne Young, we started working with Wayne Young last year after some of our members, I'm the president of an angler club that's based on the Northern Neck, and we've had one or two here and there for the last few years have run afoul of the GW rock pile that was left when the, when the light was pulled out in 2015. The rocks obviously were placed there by the Coast Guard and were left there by the Coast Guard. Since then, there have been a number of others that have, that have run into that pile. It's about 450 feet away from the four GW marker, and the rock pile is unmarked. So it's, it's not, it's not rocket science why people keep hitting it. So we've just tried to do some things to elevate it, and one of our members, and also is, his name Wayne Young, he lives in Northern Virginia, he comes down here and speaks fairly often. He's written 12 or 14 books on hazards, markers, fishing ostensibly, but also hazards and wrecks in the Chesapeake. And if you Google his name on Amazon, you'll see quite a bit on him. He is on tonight. He was unable to attend. He's had some knee changes and hip changes recently, but he was, he worked for, he was an officer in the Coast Guard, buoy tender in Alaska, very familiar with markers and lights and whatnot. And he agreed to look at this and give us a report, and which he did. And I made that available to Chip, and I've got copies if anyone wants some. I have, I don't have copies for everyone, but I do have some with me, and I can distribute them when, when we break, and you'll, you'll have a written copy anyway. Given, given to Chip. Chip's had electronic editions. And I believe Wayne is on, and I know the rule's a little different. We can't get him on here or shouldn't, the way your things go, but I would like to be able to have him discuss this just a bit. I know our time is valuable here, so whatever is kosher with you guys on having him speak a little bit about it, okay? We're obviously great friends of the Coast Guard and all that. This is not a Coast Guard bashing evening at all. We'd just like to all come together and figure out what we can do to, to change the situation as it sits out there in the lower GW. So thank you very much for having us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ames. Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I have slides that I can share. I don't know if you have copies there that you can put up to show. I don't know how you want to do this. That's actually my, the words. I actually have some graphics.
Got any graphics? You don't have any graphics? Okay.
I did, I did mail them. You seen them?
Yeah, I have them in this package you sent to us.
Okay, fine. There are only about four slides that are.
All right. Mr. Young, we don't have them, have them in order to put up on the screen, but the graphics were sent to each board member.
Okay, fine. I mean, I can share a screen and show them if your host allows that. If not, I'll just go through a summary and I'll key you into, to each slide. Your preference, sir.
It looks like that's the verbiage that discusses the slide, but it's not the slides themselves.
Okay, well, let me just go through the, the verbiage. My letter report to the Northern Neck Anglers Club provides details of what my research found about the massive rock pile at the mouth of the Great Wacomiko River. I offer the report for the record, for the board, and will summarize the findings. The first slide that I was going to put up is actually Figure Four in the letter report, which I believe you have. The available historical information is that the rock pile was placed by the U.S. Lighthouse Service as an icebreaker to protect the former Great Wacomiko River Screw Pile Lighthouse from winter ice damage. This massive circular rock pile has a diameter of 60 feet, rises 10 to 12 feet off the bottom, and lies just below the water surface at mean low water. The rock pile was abandoned and placed by the Coast Guard when the old light structure was removed. It has since collected multiple boats yearly, typically with significant damage to vessel underbody structure and outboard and stern drive lower units. The second slide would be Figure Nine in the letter report. A 2007 survey by the National Ocean Survey did not include the rock pile. The most recent survey of the rock pile area posted online by NOAA's Coast Survey was conducted in 1954 and is documented by National Ocean Service Descriptive Report H-081990 of 1955, and it contains the following entry. "The pile of rocks 25 meters east of Great Wacomiko River Lighthouse is considered a danger to navigation and is recommended for charting. These rocks, which bear about two feet at mean low water, are submerged at high tide. The danger of these rocks is evidenced by the fact that a 40-foot yacht was wrecked on them in April 1955. Charting and marking of the rock pile was thereafter greatly improved, but from 1964 to 2022, charting of the rock pile degraded from a precise location with chartered riprap and rock symbols to a Coast Guard buoy, which was removed circa 2018, to a general nondescript, what's referred to as an observation point symbol, and also the Great Wacomiko Wreck Light WR4." You don't have the other slides in, in the report. I believe they're in the handout that, that Ben provided. The wreck marker is 450 feet south, and I want to repeat that, 450 feet south of the icebreaker. At this distance, the wreck marker doesn't provide an effective visual reference for small boat operators. Since it's a wreck marker, it could easily be taken as a warning for a chartered wreck to the northwest rather than the rock pile. Screw pile foundation remnants were anecdotally reported located 120 feet bearing 251 degrees from the rock pile. A side-scanned sonar image taken in 2024 shows an apparent obstruction at about this location. See, you have it up. So you, you can see in that graphic, there's a substantial difference in distance between where the rock pile is and in a light structure. And for those who are small boat operators, measuring distance on the water is very difficult, and at 450 feet, it, there's just no way to really gauge your distance from the light to that rock pile. The immediate need, and I think if you have the final one, we have a picture of the rocks in the water. The immediate need is for a more robust safety profile, which may mitigate the risks sufficiently to avoid reconfiguring the site to improve marine safety. The following action plan is offered for consideration. Conduct a hydrographic survey of the site to provide complete bathymetry, dimensions of the rock pile, and a determination if screw pile ruins are present. And then update the NOAA charts and online applications with the survey results. Then replace the observation point chart symbol with a rock warning symbol on electronic charts and online charting applications to visually alert users to the presence and location of a dangerous rock pile at the site. Install a permanent fixed lighted warning marker or markers in the immediate proximity of the rock pile to both warn of its presence and to identify its exact location. Conduct a reconnaissance study to assess converting the icebreaker to a permitted artificial reef with clearance sufficient for safe passage by recreational boats. And then monitor to determine if the warning marker, once installed, has achieved safety objectives. If not, then the Coast Guard, as the successor owner of the rock pile, should proceed with site conversion to an artificial reef to mitigate the navigational hazard. Additionally, I would encourage required boating safety courses and fishing seminars include improve the awareness of structural hazards and highlight dangers to navigation in local operating areas. And I say that because many of the hotspots we fish are indeed dangers to navigation, and some of them rise within just a few feet of the water, including some additional Coast Guard icebreakers from the past. And so increased awareness by all recreational boaters would be a great improvement in the information they have now. And that's what I have for you. I'll take any questions if you have any.
All right, any board members have any questions, Mr. Young?
Not at this time.
Not this time. All right.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Young, in, in your opinion, is the, the fixed warning marker more appropriate than a, the buoy type marker?
Absolutely. Buys move around and so forth. I think a fixed marker, lit fixed marker would be best, would very clearly define, and in very close proximity to the rock pile would define where it is.
And is one fixed marker sufficient?
That's the $64 question. I would prefer several around it, but one would be a great start.
Thank you.
I have one question. Would a lighted marker interfere with the regular navigation markers going in and out of that river?
Not if it's an appropriately designed and lit marker with the right colors. The Coast Guard can advise on what that should be.
All right. Any, any other board members have any questions, comments? Do we have anybody here from the Coast Guard?
Yes, they are.
All right, would you like to come up, sir? Good.
Good evening.
Gentlemen, good, glad, glad to see y'all here tonight.
Sir, thank you for the invitation from the board. I'm Justin Strassfield, representing the Captain of the Port, Captain Peggy Britton, Lieutenant Commander of the Waterways Division in Sector Virginia, so our Norfolk office, and Dana Wise here, the chief, is adding AIDS Navigation Team, Milford Haven Officer in Charge, and I know he's been on scene with this specific aide very recently to do a post-incident survey, if you will, and recently teched and replaced the, the battery of the light on the WR number four there. The brief history that I was able to kind of dig into, since this was brought to my attention a few days ago, is that the Coast Guard removed the, some of these obstructions in 2014 and converted the buoy that was in the area marking the obstruction at least by 2018. There was a history of it walking off station, as the gentleman mentioned, which is kind of the inherent risk of having a floating aide right there. And I think it was 2018 that we decided to convert this to a lateral aide. So the idea being that mariners are not supposed to be transiting on the north side of the beacon, and that it's marked that the danger is, basically on that side, the good waters to the south side of the, of the red marker there. We were in touch with NOAA Office of Coast Survey yesterday or day before yesterday, and they're looking at doing a survey, Bath and Messer survey before Memorial Day, and there was supposed to be a chart update that would have been published today. I didn't verify if it's published, but they were going to enhance the symbology right there to show that there is additional obstructions in the area. So we're keenly looking forward to seeing what the results of those survey are, and if there was remnants left over by the contractor in 2014, we'd be interested in pursuing some kind of enhancement. I don't know what kind of remediation we could look at if there is something that was Coast Guard property left down there, but happy to take any other questions from the board if you have them for us.
All right, any board members have any questions?
You mentioned that you were involved recently in a post-incident survey. What is that?
Yes, sir. So we received a report, complaints, somebody hit the, the said rock pile there. So when that happens, my team, the AIDS Navigation Team, we go out and verify all the AIDS navigation within that proximity of the elision. So what we did is, because the elision was involving right due north of WR4, we checked the two buoys leading into the entrance to the river, as well as W4 and Number Six. Those were the, within the general proximity. We found both buoys were on station and watching properly. The lights, the two lights, WR4 and Number Six, were both watching properly as well. Number Four and Number Six were both due for recharge later on this year, because it's a self-contained LED optic. It's got solar panels and a battery. So we went ahead and replaced it. So Number Four and Number Six do have brand-new optics on them. There was nothing found wrong with them. It's just preemptive, we, we replaced them, so.
You take this survey each time you're made aware of an instance, no matter the time, between the instances?
Yes, yes. If we receive a report, typically we, we will respond within 72 hours, as long as weather permits. We go out there, and then that report is, is relayed from my team up to our district offices. And just, if we find anything discrepant, meaning a, a day board was missing, a buoy off station, we'll correct it within our capabilities, and then we relay that information up, so. And again, during this, this last one, which was two weeks ago on a Friday, we found no faulty equipment or anything like that. The buoys were watching properly. And the aide is due south there, marking, you know, the vicinity of shoal water to steer the mariner away from it. But I did observe while we were working Number Six, I had a technician on the light. We were in fog. I did observe three boaters, commercial vessels, operating outside of the channel in vicinity of these hazards, so.
Well, you do know that the commercial guys are made to operate outside of the channel.
Yep, absolutely. They were just transiting though at the time, so.
You say, when did they start taking reports on that?
The report I received, I received the report.
I'm talking about in general.
For this specific aide?
That situation, yes, yeah.
I know it's, it's had a history going back to when the lighthouse was removed, back 2015, and then 2018 is when it was converted to a single pile light.
You've probably been what, there four or five years or something? How long have you been in Milford Haven?
I reported in, I, I took over in June 14th of last year.
Okay. I went to work for the State Marine Police in '72.
Okay.
And I've literally pulled hundreds of boats off of there.
Okay.
And I used to send reports in, but I always got back the same exact thing that your cohort said. Vessels need to stay to the right returning, and that's all we ever got. It's on state bottom, but it's your jurisdiction because it's your rocks, but it is on state bottom. And I was just wondering when they started taking those reports in and actually doing something with them. We, we actually stopped doing because we never got no response from it.
Okay.
But I've, I've literally pulled hundreds of boats off them rocks in 45 years.
Okay.
And the sailboats hit it, even today, the sailboats hit it, and most of them just bounce off and keep on going. It's the power boats that tear up their running gear and have the problem. Some of them have actually sunk out there. Sea Rescue's worked a lot on them out there that have actually taken on water and sunk. It's definitely a hazard. Do you feel like, in your opinion, as an AIDS Navigation Team, are you a head member of the team?
Yes, I'm the officer in charge, sir.
If these rocks were removed, let's just say if they were, to a reasonable level. I think it's about 10 feet of water there, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Vicinity of where the aide is, I, I was seeing about 10 to 12 feet.
If two-thirds of those were removed, I would see no reason for a light personally. Would you see any reason for a light to be there? I think it would just complication, the navigation system going in there with all the factory lights and other lights.
It would depend. I mean, we, we can still keep a lateral aide there, but if the hazard was removed, we would simply remark the aide instead of being WR4. It would just be Number Four.
Not necessarily be a light.
We could still keep a light there without looking directly at the chartlet there. I believe there's a slight bend, so we could keep it as a.
You're going to be right on the edge of the channel, that's why I ask.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you telling. All right, any other board members?
Yes. I got some information in, back in, I got my information back to 2020. It was a 72-foot vessel hit, hit the rock pile. 2021, another vessel hit it, and then most recently, it was another vessel hit it. And I find it very concerning that the Coast Guard comes in and you do your investigations and your reports, and to me, it's a life safety issue, huge life safety issue, and nothing's done about this. And you're not only looking at someone maybe getting killed, but there's been thousands of dollars worth of damage done to boats. I talked to one gentleman, it was $80,000 worth of damage done to his boat. He paid for it out of pocket. I know another one right now is right at $30,000 damage to their boat. They're going to pay for it out of the pocket. And, you know, life safety should be a priority for everyone, but it's kind of hard to pay these kind of bills out of your pocket, and it's other people here tonight. If you don't mind, raise your hand if you had an incident on that rock pile. There you go. We can, we can continue to add that I got $110,000 worth of damages on boats. I'm probably going up to about $200,000 worth of damages, and that's not all of them. I really think the Coast Guard needs to take a step in the right direction and mark it or have it removed, but one marker and relying on people to, to know all the rules and regulations is not going to work. It's not working now. It's not, it's just not going to work. Somebody's going to get killed. Then that's going to be back on who? It's being brought to y'all's attention tonight. That's all I got.
Just to add to that, the, the people in this room that just raised their hands are experienced, experienced mariners.
Absolutely.
Mr. Diamond, how many years have you worked on the water?
About 60, I guess.
Mr. Cowell?
Yep.
How many years?
I've been in the world for 10 years, half my time. I was on the boat on January 13th. I hope I'm the last one to hit the rock pile. I hope nobody else has hit it since then. And I thought I was well inside of where it used to be, but there was no markings to tell us where the rock pile was. Thousands of boats were thrown about. The boat itself crossed about two and a half feet of water, and it drives along a few feet. They outboarded, they outrised, the boat was destroyed, and at the tide of a foot lower, I probably would have covered gash in the boat that ripped painted Chairman's office bill committee here. And we may not have been here to testify. I think it's, I think it's definitely a hazard to navigation, but it's also a hazard to life. So in the future, somebody should hit the thing wrong and save, and I'd be, be saved up to down there for 75 degrees.
When I hit it, I don't know, I mean, I tore my wheel off. I had a wheel that didn't hit the rudder and shoved it up to the bottom of it, and you know, it would have sank, you know, that day. Of course, I was kind of in the wrong because I was assuming they put the pole beacon back where the landing house was, and they didn't. I mean, I don't know why. I should have had a reason or whatever. But to me, common sense, if you're going to replace the landing house, you would put the pole beacon back where the landing house was. And the rock pile was always northeast of the landing house, but the boat lane. Now, I mean, that's where it been. I've been going there for 60-some years. That's always where it was. So I thought I knew where it was. But when I hit them, I didn't know where they were. But now they inside the landing house about two or three boat lanes, you know? And it ended up total different direction. And I guess they have a reason for putting the pole beacon where it is. I mean, I don't know what it was, but, and, and I, I just assumed it. And I go there all the time, and normally I run fully inshore, but that particular time, I was coming from offshore above that, and I just, I mean, I knew it was inside of it, I knew the rocks were northeast of it, so it wasn't worse. But anyway, it cost me $3,000. But anyway, I didn't sink the boat, and it was in October, the water was cold, probably the drought, but plus it would did. I mean, it's very dangerous, very dangerous.
I, I got to say, it all comes off, because this was the response, thanks, AC, the response I got after calling Whitman, who then called the Coast Guard. So I thought, oh, all right, we'll go through Congressman. It's on the chart. That's what I just heard. And I thought, you know what? They're right. And then I thought, I've been voting for, since I was 10 years old. My grandfather was the Admiral in charge of the U.S. Coast and Geodeic Survey. He beat into me how to navigate with a sextant, how to navigate using cans of oil, everything. And I hit the damn thing in my 40-foot wood trawler, and they thought it was going to be, and I feel like a fool. Listen, I can brag about my family, but it, you think, okay, well, that's where that pole is. I know that. It pissed off my wife, her wine fell off the boat. It was a nightmare, but it probably was about $10,000 or $12,000. Plus, I ended up having to buy the railway that I was getting the boat worked on, so that's a whole thing. So I try and see it with humor, but it scared the shit. It just shouldn't be there. It makes no sense. If you guys, if I had put that rock pile there, you guys would be giving me a citation out the wazoo and making me remove that rock pile. I don't know why this is so complicated. It just doesn't make any sense. I was told by Whitman to put together a protest and, you know, people speak and do other stuff. I'm thinking, oh, great, now I have to become that person. Please, please, please do something about it. You guys are the ones that can do something about it. That's what we need you for. You can give me a ticket for not having life jackets and all that other crap. Do your part and get rid of those things, or do something to make us aware, because good people that know what they're doing are still hitting it. This isn't like Northern Virginia out on the Potomac with a guy in a bathtub with a, you know, a steel chainsaw operating boat. This is like people that have. This is like people that have known their stuff and were still hitting it. You...
Uh, this is Wayne Young. With the board's permission, may I make a few more observations?
Yes, sir.
Um, the rock pile is there and was put there for a legitimate purpose. Uh, it was an icebreaker to protect the rock, the lighthouse from ice. And there are numbers of them around the bay. I documented them, and some of them are in, above the water and some aren't. But it was legitimately placed there. The problem is, it obviously is no longer serving that purpose. It is serving the purpose, however, of three-dimensional vertical relief providing green habitat, which is, has its own set of values, which is why I suggested possibly removing the top layers to provide a safe clearance for small boat passage. The other thing to consider is that recreational boaters are not trained the same way the Coast Guard is. Most of these folks probably don't understand what the Coast Guard representatives just said. I'm retired Coast Guard. I'm almost 80 years old, and I've got a lot of experience. And I didn't know the rocks were there. Fortunately, I didn't hit them, but I found them because they were previously charted on the paper charts that I was using. And that's no longer there. The observation point needs to be replaced with a rock symbol. But because recreational boaters don't have that same level of skill, they can't be expected to understand the fine points that the Coast Guard was just talking about. And that frame of reference of 450 feet is a long, long way on the water in a small boat, and just does not give you a good visual frame of reference to estimate where you are in relation to the rock and in relation to the marker. And that's why a marker is needed exactly at the rock pile.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Gentlemen, before you leave, you're gonna get in your cars and go back south and go to your offices and pass this on up to all your upper people. I'm sure that's the way it usually works. But if there's anything this board can do, and Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you can back me up on this, that we can do to help, to get this thing moving, I would certainly hope you would contact us and let us know.
Uh, yes, sir. And if anybody has additional input, track lines, visual, sonar readings, or anything that they can provide us to show us the exact area, oh, thank you. There we go. Um, with, with more, you know, detail and kinda show us track lines, hey, how are you approaching this aid? What's your heading? That will give us a better picture as well, so. And our Sector Waterways Aton Officer, he's already provided his email.
That's good. And when you get this one done, go on back across the bay and get that one at Tangier Sound picked up too. That would be a good thing. All right, any more questions?
Well, there's another question, but I was gonna save this, but I'm gonna go on and put it in there. Um, I'd like to see a work group formed to help take care of this matter. If we don't do anything like that, nothing's gonna be done, because it's gonna go right back and just fizzle away. You can call it a committee or a work group, what have you. I don't know what you wanna call it. But I think one needs to be put together. And I think Mr. Fisher and Mr. Williams would be ideal representatives from the board. And I don't know who else would wanna participate, but someone from the Coast Guard needs to be on board with it as well and keep this going. It's gonna provide better communications. Because communications has been a problem in this matter to start off with. And I think that will help with that process. That way, the board can stay informed, and all the concerned citizens can stay informed. They can do email group.
We can, we can certainly, we can certainly do a citizens committee and work with the Congressman and work with the Coast Guard, try to get this thing resolved and do it in a reasonable amount of time.
You good with that, Mr. Williams?
Absolutely.
You fellows mind the help?
Say again, sir?
I say, do you fellows mind the help?
We participate in waterway committees around the state and happy to support this body as well.
You got plenty of room down in Milford Haven, don't you?
And we appreciate any input you can give us. We're taking immediate actions. Like we said, we're working with NOAA to get an updated survey out there hopefully soon. And you should be seeing chart corrections with the larger symbol on there hopefully by tomorrow, so.
I bet, um, anyone that's here online that would like to participate could reach out to Mr. Williams and Mr. Fisher, the gentleman right there.
I'll get all of this thing.
Okay, so another one.
Mr. Young. Mr. Young would like to...
The one that's on, being called...
Okay. Maybe we could have five people, six people, seven, and cap it at that, and get a good working group and go from there.
Sounds good.
And if we need a motion for that, I'll make it as a motion.
I'd like you wanted a motion.
Yep.
Let's put it in the motion. All right, that's the best thing. Put it in the motion. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us against? All right. Motion passes. Gentlemen, I really do appreciate y'all coming in today. Uh, you don't, the board really does appreciate y'all coming, and I know the citizens here appreciate you coming. I just hope we can get something done on this as soon as possible before something very bad happens. We don't want anything to happen. It's bad enough if you go out there and tear a wheel up or shaft or other things, lower units and all them boats, but we don't want any loss of life. And I know that a rock pile is a good spot to fish, but if it's some kinda way to mark it and make it so people know it's there, that would be ideal, or whatever comes up that's the best idea.
Roger, sir. We appreciate your time, and we're here and willing and able to support, so, thank you.
All right. Again, thank y'all for coming.
Thanks for all you do for us.
No problem.
Thank you, man.
We do appreciate it, so...
And I'll tell you what, I'm glad to have you out there, because I have needed you, but I don't wanna have to call you.
Check you spoke really good.
So, no, no, we appreciate it, and just to toot my own unit's horn, just in the nine months I've been there, we've corrected over 90-something Aton discrepancies, so whether extinguished light, missing board, hazard to navigation, we've gone through tons and tons of pallets of wood to make the waterways safer. Because not only do I drive a Coast Guard boat, I drive my own boat. I'm out here fishing these same wrecks as well. So I want to make sure the waterways look good for the users out there, so. We appreciate your time, and we've gotten nothing but support from the community, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, now, a lot of these wrecks out there, the steel has moved away from the wreck, and that needs to be remarked again. It's moving.
We do our best to mark as soon as we receive a report. We get out there and mark them as fast and as timely as possible, even going above and beyond what is required of us with the Coast Guard, meaning setting additional, like Norwegian fenders out there so that boaters can see them, because not everybody understands what a WR means. So we put that Norwegian fender to really steer away from them, because we know, like steel, you know, and concrete, obviously, underneath the water is not a good mix, so...
Not a good mix.
But we, my crew does respond as fast and as timely as possible, because we wanna avoid any, you know, potential lapses, as well as the Sector Command Center broadcasting, you know, what those hazards are, so. Including just two weeks ago, the Upper Rappahannock River, we had over 30 discrepancies that we corrected in three days, so. We got that waterway back marked correctly and reestablished some fixed aids, so they won't be walking off on station, some of, some older buoys, so. So we're out there working very hard for everyone, and like I said, we really do appreciate the community's support, both up here and down Matthews, Gloucester, York County that we service, so. We work all the way from Smith Point down to Back River, down Langley Air Force Base, so. We have a big AOR, a big area of responsibility that we service, and we take all complaints and any discrepancy reports seriously and respond immediately, you know, as weather permits, so. But thank you all for your time, and we do appreciate it.
Well, again, thank you for coming, and thank you for everything that you do, that you do out here on this water for us.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is a...
Thank you. I felt very alone five years ago. It felt isolated, and I appreciate you guys feeling, you don't know how much I feel.
All right. Any other comments from people that have struck at anything before I move on to the next presentation?
We're here, we're doing it, we didn't...
No, I'm getting it. All right, well, I'll tell you what, I appreciate y'all coming, appreciate all the input, and let's see if we can get this ball moving and hopefully get this thing taken care of.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank y'all. And y'all are welcome to stay now. Don't run off.
I hope you're not hungry.
All right. Our next item is All Points Broadband. We have a presentation from them, Mr. Tom Enns. Mr. Enns, good to see you tonight, yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Do you think we'll have that? Oh, good. Thank you for an opportunity to provide an update on the broadband project that's been going on for several years now across the region. As you all know, we're part of a five-county regional update. I have some stats here for the overall project. Right now, we are winding down this phase of our regional project. I got some notes on here later on in the slide about what's happening next for broadband expansion to folks who don't have it, not only in Northumberland but across the state. Then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the success that we've had to date, a number of addresses that we're still working on. But overall, this was a successful public-private partnership between the five counties, our two electric providers, Dominion Energy Virginia, Northern Neck Electric Cooperative, All Points Broadband, and the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. Overall, we invested about $120 million across the region, spread across the five counties, and now about 10,000 locations that didn't have access to broadband several years ago can sign up. 100% end-to-end fiber broadband. In the realm of internet service providers, typically your customer rating on a Google or Yelp is pretty low, but we're proud of our 4.6 stars, a lot of good customer service. Not everything goes perfectly in building a brand-new network. We're doing a lot of construction, going through people's yards, drilling holes in walls. So not everything is perfect, but overall, compared to most internet service providers, we have a real focus on customer support. Across the region, we built about 1,600 miles of fiber. That does not include the 330 miles from Dominion, and another several hundred miles that we built to individuals' homes. A key achievement here that isn't specifically tied to the broadband access, but is a good investment in your electric infrastructure, is that we reviewed, did make-ready engineering on 23,000 electric poles. That's about 150 times what you would normally see in a year of going through poles, so we think of like an ice storm that we've just gone through. We analyzed all of those poles on how they could handle a 10-year ice storm with our cable being attached to a new pole. If it couldn't handle that lateral force or the sag, then the pole would be replaced. So that was a massive investment in the electric grid. And then the next thing that's coming up in Virginia and across the country is called the BEED program. This is part of the Infrastructure Act. I have a couple slides on that at the end of this. But I want to remind folks to go to our website, apbfiber.com, put in your address. Hopefully, you get a response that says you're in our project area. If not, still fill out the information. There are some addresses that may get a quirky response. Please send those to county administration. I can work those individually. I have a couple in my queue right now. Go to our website, put in your address, see if you're in the project. If not, put in your information. Here's just a screenshot of our Google reviews. A lot of emphasis on the customer interaction. You can go and see that individual technicians and support reps are called out by name. We know that it's important to your constituents to have good customer service, and we focus on that. Go to the next slide, please. Here's a slide with the miles that we built by county. Some of this is skewed in Northumberland, and I'll get to a map of the Northumberland service areas. We built about 260 or so distribution miles and another 70 miles to individuals' homes in Northumberland. This is mainly for reference for you, it's probably hard to read from the audience. Go to the next slide, please. Here are the poles, so Northumberland, we did about 4,000 poles. Earlier on in this process, these were, these columns were yellow as we're going through the ticketing work with Dominion and NNEC. They're now all green, so that's 23,000 poles that we did engineering review on. A number of those were replaced or strengthened with Guy wires, so again, massive investment in the electric grid. Go to the next slide. Here's a map of generally the routes that we took for aerial fiber. These are actually dots. These are individual poles. If we're not on a pole, we are in an underground conduit, which would not have been possible without help with VDOT and land use permit approvals, so great collaboration there. That's for underground. These are the aerial routes, so we can go ahead to the next slide. So Northumberland, about 250 miles of our fiber on what is called XGS pond architecture that shouldn't mean anything to you other than it is gold-plated, top-of-the-line technology, and we can scale up to what is 10 gigabits by 10 gigabits. That is 10 times more than what we will even offer today, which you couldn't possibly use at your home. But this is a long-term investment in the community, in this infrastructure, so in 15 or 20 years, when there's some technology we haven't even thought of yet that needs that kinda speed, the fiber is there and can support that capacity. So, great investment today, long-term use. Not only can that scale for capacity in the future, but it also can scale for new homes that are built, or extensions from our network that we've built to go compete with other internet service providers. We also built 73 miles worth of what's called the drop, that is from our distribution fiber to the side of someone's home, so 73 miles of that across the county. It's about 2,000 homes that can now sign up for broadband in Northumberland, and 40% have already subscribed, so massive take rate. People obviously appreciate this service that you all brought to them through this public-private partnership. Again, 4,000 poles went through our make-ready process. And another reminder, go to our website, make sure your address is there to sign up. If not, please work through county administration to send me that address. I can run those down with our team. Takes a couple weeks usually. Go to the next slide. This is gonna be easier to see on your own screen. These are what is called the fiber service areas. That's the colored polygon. Each one of them kind of operates as its own network. It has what's called an active cabinet, where the light is regenerated in the fiber and then distributed out through the rest of the colored polygon. The way that they work is in a ring, so if the fiber goes down on one side of the colored polygon, we can still have redundancy and get back out. While we were under construction, that redundancy didn't really exist, but now that we've built our network, unless you're on a peninsula somewhere, you usually have a redundant way to access the internet, so. That is done if I, in the future, refer to fiber service areas, or if we send a notice out to customers based on a fiber service area, these are those polygons. Go to the next slide. There is a national broadband map at broadbandmap.fcc.gov. This is where you can type in your address. You can see which providers are available to you. You can see a green dot over your home most of the time. If there is not a green dot over top of your home, you can click on the map, and it'll bring up a pop-up that says, "Add a new location." If you don't have a green dot on your home, go to that map and click on it, "Add a new location." It takes about two minutes to do, and once you're in that map, all internet service providers have to report whether or not they serve your home. So if you are not on this map, then there is no... So if you are not on this map, then there is no provider who is building to you or reporting service to you. So strongly encourage you to go to this map. Here's a home. The bottom red area is pointing to the home, and there's a little blue icon to the right, which is a barn. If you go to this website, and that is your property, you can click on that dot that's over the barn, and it'll give you an option to drag it over to your home. So even if you have a dot on a part of your parcel that isn't your home, this is all automated. So if you go there and you look and you see that there's a dot that is not actually on your home, you can move it on the map, and the next time a provider reports service, it'll be at your home instead of your barn. A key factor here is to keep this data accurate because that is how the maps are generated. There are a lot of homes that have a street address that may be incorrect, or it is on the wrong parcel, or a new home is built and that data hasn't been reported up through the county. Any of those discrepancies between databases, when someone goes to our website, it could give them an error message. So really important to keep this up to date. And then in the future, if there's a location that is new or slipped through the cracks, this is the way that the FCC will track whether or not they should get broadband subsidy to make sure they have access. Can we go to the next slide? The BEED program is part of the Infrastructure Act. Virginia was allocated $1.5 billion to further close the digital divide and make broadband more affordable. They put out a list of about 130,000 locations across the state that on July 25th, the state's broadband office will have a plan to get them broadband. This is an ongoing application process right now. Applications for this program are due March 1st. All points, other ISPs would apply for subsidy to bring broadband to folks who don't have it. And by the end of the day, the state is required to have a plan for all 130,000 of them. They have sufficient funding to do that. I would say a risk here is, you know, we never know what is actually going to happen at the federal level. But this program is funded. It has been allocated to the states, and these are real locations that need broadband. So relatively speaking, I think it's a pretty safe, low-risk program. But there's a ton of information on this at the state's broadband office website, link here. All points is going to submit our application on March 1st. We have a county letter of support to do that. The difference between this program and the Virginia telecommunications program is that we apply directly as opposed to going through a public entity. But of course, we would keep the county up to speed on developments in the BEED program. A lot of the locations that have come through county administration to verify whether or not they're in the project or if they're BEED eligible, we will know for sure what is going to happen with them on July 25th. That is the day that the state has to publicly announce their plan. Again, here, the mapping remains very critical. So we got another map after this one. Go to the next slide. So these are the areas that will be an individual project in the BEED program. They are the zip code tabulation areas within the county. The state had to pick a geographic area. They could have done census block groups. They picked zip code tabulation areas. This means that each colored polygon here will get its own application for BEED. But at the end of the day, every single unserved location on the state's map in Northumberland will have to have a plan to get broadband or a commitment from an existing provider to do it today without a special construction fee. So again, this is mainly for reference. A whole lot more information will come out on the BEED program this summer. That's our update for today. We've made a lot of progress, massive investment in the county. We expect to be adding more customers every day, and then we're going to invest even more through the BEED program. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Enns?
You said the BEED program, more information will be coming out this summer.
Yes, sir.
So will that come down through you to each location to get out to the citizens?
Yes, we will share that information with the county. There's an interaction between a state agency and a federal agency, and there's some back-and-forth there. So some time periods are to be determined. But we will apply on March 1st. The next date that is for certain is that Virginia has to publish its plans on July 25th. And they'll probably make some of it public in June, but those are the only two dates that are set in stone. And then the information is publicly available. We'll share that with the county. But those are the only two dates that are set in stone.
All right. Any other questions? How long before you see that you'll be able to go in your areas that are serviced by other companies?
For the current program or for the BEED program?
Well, current program allows you to go into the unserved areas.
Yes.
I mean, served areas by other companies that refuse to give you service. That's the best way to put it. Because I've been waiting on one company for four years, and they refuse to give me service.
So right now, the BEED program, the one that we're operating under right now, that ends on March 31st, or whenever we get through what I call the paperwork phase, but no later than March 31st. For some locations, if you go to our website and you sign up and you weren't technically in the BEED program, we could go out there and serve you before March 31st. But that is the date that the contract, quote-unquote, expires, at which point we can go and invest with our own private capital to go and offer competitive services.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Pass, have any questions? Yes.
How do you get up to, sign up to the BEED program? Is that by going to the broadband map? Is that how you sign up?
So that's a great question. If you were on the, let's see, I forget which page, but the National Broadband Map page, if you scroll down to the one with the dots that you can move. If you were, keep going, if you're on the National Broadband Map, that, yeah, that one, one up. If you're on this map and you did not have access to reliable broadband service, which is a defined term, but if you're on this map, you didn't have broadband service, and you were on the list the state put out on December 1st, you're in BEED whether you like it or not. They did all that work and put your address in there. So you do not, no homeowner or resident needs to go and sign up for BEED. You're on that list. It's about 130,000 locations across the state. If you didn't make it on that list, the state is going to continue having programs to get broadband to people who don't have it. But they had to pick a date and say, on this date, this is the list of eligible homes. So there's no, there's no sign up, per se, but if you go to this website and you don't even have a green dot over your home, then you're not in the BEED program.
And what agency in the state publishes that list?
The, it's the Department of Housing and Community Development. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
This map is the Federal Communications Commission.
Any other questions, Mr. Enns? All right, Mr. Enns?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next would be an update from Northumberland County Schools. Come on up, ladies. Y'all introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Tina Withers. As of January 31st, I was appointed interim director of finance for Northumberland County Public Schools.
Hi, I'm Shannon O'Beare. I'm the human resource and finance specialist.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
So we're here to represent the finance department at the schools. Dr. Worgro, sorry that she could not attend this evening. She had a family emergency come up suddenly. We want the board to know that we are working to implement processes and procedures to improve the school finance accountability. We are currently working through Ms. Booth's records to provide accurate figures to the board.
Can you hear? All right. Would you speak into the microphone?
We just have a brief update. We just want to thank you for your time and support, and feel free to reach out to either one of us if you have any questions or concerns.
Okay.
That's all we have for tonight.
One question I have is, when is this board going to meet the assistant superintendent? And why couldn't the assistant superintendent come?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out tomorrow if you would like me to.
Yes, ma'am. I would really like to know when that assistant superintendent's going to come meet this board.
Okay. All right. I'll check into that and get back with you, Mr. Haney.
Board members, any other board members have questions, comments?
How long, you said December 31st?
January 31st. Nine days.
Okay.
Yeah, just nine days. So we've been very busy.
Very busy and a lot to do.
Yes, sir. It's a very busy time for all of us.
And we've got budget coming up.
Yes, sir, we do. We know.
Oh, I know you know.
But we're working on it.
Well, all I can say is, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we want to keep the communication open, so reach out to us for anything.
All right. Okay. We will be in contact.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank y'all for coming. Next is Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal? And don't you bring any more snow like you did this week.
I'm getting rid of it. I'm not bringing it.
I knew you wanted something to go out there and play in, but you didn't have to ask for all this. But we do appreciate you taking care of the roads.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you did a very good job taking care of these roads.
I'll take the credit, but the temperatures really help us.
The temperature did help you.
We are, well, we are currently making brown as fast as we can, getting ready for Wednesday. So the next storm, last I was told and last I looked at the weather, is coming Wednesday. So we're looking for another round Wednesday.
But just much next Wednesday?
Hopefully, hopefully not that much. Last I saw was four inches on Wednesday and two inches on Thursday, but that could have changed. It might change between now and then, three or four more times. But we're making brown as fast as we can and loading up our tanks and tankers, and we'll be ready to get back at it on Tuesday. Hoping we get a long weekend. That'll be the first long weekend we've had since Christmas, I guess. But hey, we did find some time to cut some brush between the storms. We cut brushes on Hatches Avenue, Jesse DuPont Road, Shell Landing Road, and Cone Church. We've been trying to keep up with the potholes, and, you know, with a bad winter, you get a bad pothole season in the spring. We're trying to keep up with them. If you see them, feel free to reach out and let us know where they are. The best way to do that is our customer service line. That's 1-800-4-RODE, F-O-R-R-O-A-D. And we'll try to get on those as soon as we can. We are still trying to keep up with work orders and incidents countywide, and as I mentioned, we have another storm next week we're getting ready for now. All the maintenance on the upcoming list will probably be on there for another month or two until we get on the other side of some better weather and drier ground. I did add the pavement schedule to this report, so you can see the work there. It's planned on 360. That's on plant mix, hot-mix asphalt on 360 on both sides of Calio, Fleaton Road, and then Menhain Road, 657 and 659. Portions of those roads will be paved with hot-mix asphalt. The Cape Seal, we have four routes on the Cape Seal. Cape Seal, I'd just like to remind everybody, that's a two-step process. It goes down as surface treatment, and then the contractor leaves. Well, actually, if there's striping there, the first contractor comes and takes off the thermoplastic striping, and then they come back and paint a yellow line. So a lot of times we get a question, like, why'd you take the lines off if you're just going to put them right back down? And the reason is, the surface treatment doesn't stick to the thermoplastic. So we have to take that material up, and then we put a temporary paint down that the surface treatment can go on top of. So there are a lot of mobilizations that happen between different contractors on the Cape Seal process. So after the line is eradicated and put back down, we do the surface treatment, and then that contractor leaves, and the surface treatment cures. And a lot of times, people think that we're done. I mean, we turn their asphalt road into a gravel road because the surface treatment has a lot of loose gravel on top of it until the traffic wears it off. But then they come back, another contractor comes back after that and sweeps the road and applies a slurry that fills in a lot of the little cracks and nooks and crannies in that surface treatment. And it sets up, it sets up at first, it looks a little brownish, and then as it cures, it turns black. And it looks like plant-mixed asphalt. Most people, if you don't know any better, you'd think it was an asphalt road. So it's a nice product. It is admittedly a little bit of a mess getting there, but it generates some complaints. There are four routes there that we're planning in the county to do that. Mr. Tadlock, if you want, we will send letters to the residents on those routes. If you can get me their addresses, we're happy to mail letters so that those residents will know what's going on. It is a good product. I compare it to refinishing hardwood floors. You know, it's a mess, but when you're all done, it looks nice. So we'll get there. Just hang in there with me. The surface treatment, there are a bunch of surface treatment routes in Northumberland this year, so we'll be here for a while getting those done. And what else? Bush Mill, that's Gower Repair Project. We closed the road today, so that contractor is starting to mobilize to get that work done. I did see, I've had some communication with Mr. McKenzie about picking up litter on behalf of the county using the VDOT vendor, and I saw that later in the agenda. Whatever you all decide there, if it could just be in the minutes, approving whatever, that'll help me go ahead and get going on it. It's $4,345.76, if that's what you'll have for primary route litter.
Yeah. What we have later on, on the agenda, is the supplemental appropriation for the grant funds that we receive.
Okay.
And what we were looking at doing, and Mr. McKenzie's here, who works with the Anti-Litter Committee. I think they were looking at possibly doing the primary road pickup. Mr. McKenzie, if you want to add anything.
Yes, sir. That's been one of the goals for the Anti-Litter Committee. When we first started, Mr. Beal came out and spoke to us and mentioned that Lancaster County did the same thing. They did an additional cleanup and cleaned up all the roads, and we're just going to do the primary roads because of the cost factor. It'd be approximately $14,000 to do an additional cleanup for the secondary and primary. So since we only got $10,000 from DEQ, we would like to do the primary road cleanup, and that's what we applied for in the grant when we got them, when they asked for what we were going to do. We're going to do cleanups, and we're also going to do the recycling, which we'll talk about it later as well. But this will, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Beal, he explained to us that normally they pick up the trash at the first mowing and the last mowing of the year. And so if we can do an additional cleanup in the spring, hopefully, that'll make the roadways look better and make it easier for the first mowing as well.
Yeah, we've been picking up trash with every mow, so there is a third in the middle. But we delay the first mow as long as we can using a plant growth retardant till probably the end of May, 1st of June. So the roads look the worst over the winter. So what I would recommend is if you all appropriate those funds, it's a 10-day notification. I have to give the contractor, and then he has 30 days to complete the work. This time of year, they're not busy mowing, so I would expect it's going to be done in a couple of weeks from the time I tell him to go. But I could authorize him to do that as soon as tomorrow. But I could authorize him to do that as soon as tomorrow, if that's what you all decide.
And just for clarification, too, this is under the current contract. The pricing is for the current contract, which expires end of March of this year.
That's right, right.
Want to take care of that now?
If we can, and then that way...
While Mr. Beal's right here?
While Mr. Beal's here, if anybody has any specific questions, we can take care of the supplemental appropriation later on.
Yeah, that's no problem. It's a pleasure, the Board.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against? Motion passes, Mr. Beal.
Thank you.
So, that'll get you started.
Appreciate Mr. McKenzie's work in the Anti-Litter Committee. I think litter is a, it's a community problem, and it's going to take all of us to fix it. I appreciate you all's support in that.
It's so easy to put it in a bag in your vehicle and take it out when you get home or at a gas station.
It really is.
But I guess it's just, I don't know. See it all the time.
Mr. Beal, do they still ever use trustees to pick up trash?
We used to, but since they closed Camp 17, we don't work any inmates anymore.
Okay.
I think the county may have access to the ones in the regional J.O., but VDOT doesn't.
Okay. All right. Any Board members have anything for Mr. Beal to fix this week? Any potholes starting?
Just keep pushing snow.
Yeah? Yeah, you got that, and then you got the potholes starting on you, which I know you'll be on them. But do thank you for the, for taking care of that snow.
All right, we'll keep at it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a call earlier about some water standing on Lewis Sutter Road, on, next to Melrose Church. And I'm not sure, I think it's a question as to whether there's anything that can be done in that area. I think they've had some cars run off into that water there. So, if you all can take a look at that for us.
We'll look at it.
Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? Staff, have anything else?
That's all I had.
All right. Mr. Beal, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you all, have a good night.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that's all our presentations at this moment. Next is County Administrator's Report.
All right, first item I have is, for the month of January, we had five new structures. A total construction cost year to, for the month is 6.5 million. Construction cost year-to-date is 6.5, and it's approximately 2.2 million above this time last year. Have quite a few supplemental appropriations for the Board's consideration. The first one is the carryover of VMRC grant funds from fiscal year '24 to '25, going to 1,001.01 to 8,006, in the amount of $400,000.
That's for the Boat Room.
That is for the ADV grant that we've received, and actually, that's underway.
Motion to approve. All right, a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against?
Next one I have is for the Sheriff's Office ballgames worked by the deputies, 3102-1,006, in the amount of $227.50.
All right, motion to approve.
Yep.
Motion second.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against?
Next item is a reimbursement for a tow bill paid by the Sheriff's Office to line item 3102, 3,012, in the amount of $200.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against?
Next item is for Tasers Company Axon. The first one is going to line item 3102, 5409, in the amount of $14,623.20. And the second item is 3102, 6,004, in the amount of $2,500, for a total amount of $17,123.20.
All right, pleasure, the Board.
I'll make a motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is against? All right, next item, please.
Next item is a grant for AEDs. And this item is going to 3102, 5414, in the amount of $6,550.98. And then the grant match is being transferred in from donation account. It's 3102, 5414, same line item. Total amount, $13,101.96.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Are these going in deputies' cars?
I want to roll up here to say yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, they are. We currently have seven, we have one in the office and six in vehicles now. This will give us five more.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff Beal.
You're welcome.
All right, next one, Mr. Tadlock?
Next one is for the transfer asset forfeiture funds to 3102, 8,009, in the amount of $4,396.88.
All right, what's the pleasure to Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against? All right, next one, sir.
Next item is for line item 1,206, 3,003, in the amount of $27,740.25. And that's related to the additional costs related to the pre-audit.
All right, what's the pleasure to Board?
What, why was it an increase? Is this, what group is this?
This is Rutherford Moss Group. So, this is the pre-audit, and they pull everything together and get it ready for Robinson Farmer-Cox for that group. The detailed, I had emailed the detailed list out to the Board last Friday. So, there were multiple things in that, that they were, they had looked at.
And my only other question is, would an upgrade in technology or some type of software program eliminate process?
I would say some of it, it would, yes.
When do you need to move forward in looking at that?
We are actually, are in talking to RDA, and trying to get something set up for next Thursday on moving forward on that. That's just part of it, but, yeah.
But we got to pay, it's a motion to approve.
Yeah, we got a motion here. All right, got a motion and a second. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is against?
Next item is the Forestry Sustainability Grant, 1209, 8,006, in the amount of $12,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Just one question. Mr. Thomas, what was the reasoning for this grant?
Well, all the accounts is, last year, applied for it, and we didn't get much money at all. But they, we didn't sell it this year without notifying us, they doubled it. So, here at the last minute, we went ahead and put in for it. Not knowing we were going to get that much. But it has to be for recreational purposes and things like that, can go for in places.
Okay, all right.
So, I figured that you have two, three areas in the county that they're looking at. Recreational, on both things of the county, that they could use this money for.
Okay.
Good thinking, thank you.
Good thinking, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Don't turn down money.
No, no. No, no, you don't want to do that, because it doesn't come back again. We got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against? All right.
I will say that the monies that were applied for by Mr. Thomas last year, was it about $3,000?
$3,400.
$3,400. We did use those monies to help with the project up to Hampton Hall, in clearing that property, so.
Every bit helps.
That looks good, too.
Next item I have is the interest accrued on the opioid bank account, in the amount of $106.34.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all is against? Next, please.
Next are the two litter grants that we had received, one in the amount of $4,728, and the other one in the amount of $10,387.24. That's going to 5302, 5625.
Move that we approve.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All right, all, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Next item I have is the local match for the CSA services to 5302, 6,002, in the amount of $34,000.
Move that we approve.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is against? All right.
Next item is NextGen 911 reimbursement, so these are in-and-out monies. 3506, 5,200, in the amount of $28,996.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against?
Next item is for Emergency Services to code 3506, 7,002, and the total amount is $13,193.92. And breaking that down, there were several other items that we've needed, needed to complete for the regional radio system. Part of that is electrical work over at the Sheriff's Office. The other part of that is the tower rent, after we negotiated that, that cost. We need, we worked out the cost over the fiscal year, and determined that we need some additional monies in that line item, since we did not receive that until after the budget was completed. The other item is $7,000 in headsets for the dispatchers. And if you remember, a couple of months ago, we, Chief Balderson brought to the Board a change order. And in that change order, the headsets were included in that, but we brought that back, because there was some clarification that was needed as far as the change order, as it related to L3 Harris. And inadvertently, the headsets were removed from that. So, we're coming back to you for the additional funds for the $7,000 on those headsets. Now, if you have any specific questions on that.
All right, any questions?
Move that we approve.
So, this is for the headsets and the total of $13,000. The headsets were seven, what was the additional, 60, 100?
The electrical work was $1,281, and the tower was about $4,900. This is the breakdown.
All right, any other additional questions?
Yeah, second.
Can you get us a spreadsheet on this radio systems and L3 Harris? What our original contract was, what the add-ons were, what the, you know, break it down by category?
Sure.
Kind of get an idea of what we are spending.
We can get that.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I got a motion and a second. All right, all those, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all against?
Next item is a request for radio chargers, and I am going to rely on Chief Balderson for these next couple items.
Chief Balderson? Good to see you, sir.
Good evening. Good to see you as well. The Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department has asked to, for the county to purchase 11 vehicle chargers for their portable radios. And the updated pricing that I received from L3 Harris for those 11 would be $2,157.10. These will go in their fire trucks for the portables that are assigned to their fire trucks, to keep the batteries charged up on them.
These are the same chargers that we purchased for Calio, right?
No, sir, we purchased a six-bank charger for them. They're using them for the same purpose, but they're using a six-bank charger. But these are different style chargers that they would be using. The other thing I would like to add to that is Mr. Albright also asked for one for his vehicle, Curtis. And that's an extra $196.10. So, the total price for 12 chargers would be $2,353.20. So, it would be 11 for Fairfield's and one for Curtis.
All right, any comments, questions for Mr. Balderson? Oh, what's the pleasure to Board?
I moved it, we approve.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
That's for all, that's for 12 chargers, right?
12 charges. All right. All right, no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is against? All right, Mr. Balderson?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is related to the L3 Harris Service Agreement Regional Radio System contract.
All right.
And this is for a 10-year maintenance service agreement.
Mr. Balderson, you have any comments?
The only comment I would make is that Mr. Tadlock and myself met with Representative from L3 Harris to discuss the 10-year contract versus the five-year contract. And we also sent it to Mr. Greg Hunter, who's the Regional Radio System Manager, for his input. And if you don't mind, I'll read you his reply that he gave to me on this contract. And that, in his experience, no change in the technological service or support will remain the same. The benefit of the extended contract in the current rates, looking at other five-year contracts, it could be up to 15% or 20% higher, whereas our 10-year has a locked-in rate for a longer duration. One of the things we asked about was the longevity of the hardware. And in his reply, it was regardless, the life cycles on the equipment and support needs will be 10 to 15 years, even if a limited hardware refresh will occur at some point. I would suggest the 10-year, I don't see any benefit for a shorter-term agreement for this type of equipment. So, that is directly from the regional radio manager on the, for a five-year versus 10-year.
And your opinion is 10 years?
Yes, sir, it gives us a better rate over that course of time.
Did you have a quote on the five-year?
It was 159, and, let's see, I have it right here.
That's why, he's looking for that. Mr. Gregory, have you had opportunity to look at this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The five-year is 152, 90688.
All right, any other questions for Chief Balderson? Staff, have any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory, you have been through this contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, what's the pleasure to Board?
I moved it, we approve.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, Chief Balderson, there you go.
Thank you. I do have two other things that are not on the agenda, reference to grants. If now is a good time for that.
Go ahead, while we got you right here.
Okay. Previously, when I was before you, in December, talking about the LifePact 35s, I had mentioned that we put in for a Rescue Squad Assistant Fund grant. And it didn't look very appealing that we were going to get that grant. Lo and behold, we were notified that we did get the grant. One of the pieces of equipment that are on... That was on that grant is the LUCA CPR device. That device is roughly $20,000. The RSAF grant is 50%. So I went back and got a new quote from Stryker because she has stated here in December that price increases were coming in January. So we did have just a little bit of a price increase. So that was my tardiness in getting this information back to Mr. Tadlock to get on the agenda. Originally, it... The matching funds would have been $9,533.13 based on a total cost of $19,066.26 for the device. The new quote came back, $19,732.77. So roughly $600 and some dollar increase in the price of the device. So I have two questions for you. One is, I have not accepted the grant because I wanted to bring it to you all, for one, to allow me to accept the grant. And number two, to be able to utilize the funds from the EMS billing money to purchase this piece of... This piece of equipment and then submit for reimbursement. So the ask would be for approval to use $19,732.77 to purchase the device. If you let me have the grant, I would get 50% of that reimbursed through OEMS, which would then be a cost to the county of $10,199.64.
If we didn't get the grant and we just purchased it outright, it would be $19,732.77.
Excuse me, almost 50% savings.
Yes, sir. And because we put the grant in prior to the price increase, the grant will only pay for the original quote. And that's why we have that little bit of... That $600 and some odd dollars more that we have to pick up.
All right, any other questions, comments for Chief Balderson? Pleasure to the board.
I move that we approve his request.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? There you go, Mr. Balderson.
Thank you. The next thing I have is... I may be a little bit premature because I see it on the agenda, reference to the grants and some policies. But I wanted to bring this to you to get your permission to apply for the next RSAF grant, which is open now. So with that, we have some cots or a particular cot that is old enough that it's not able to be put on the ProCare contract. So what the ProCare contract is through Stryker is a service agreement where they come out and they service the equipment and make sure it's appropriately ready to be used and meets their specifications. This current cot is not able to be put on the new contact... Contract that we have. So I want to replace that cot. So that's what I would be applying for with this RSAF grant cycle.
The DePaul load?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's just for the structure itself, not the loading system?
That is correct. It will work on the current loading system we have in the ambulance. So it's just for the cot. The cost of that particular piece of equipment is $35,528. I'm going to put in for the grant, which is again a 50-50 grant. If we are approved for that grant, it would ultimately, after reimbursement, would cost the county $17,764. So we would initially pay the 35, put in for the reimbursement, and then receive that 50% match back. But I wanted to bring it to you to make sure that I can put in for that grant so that we can move forward with that. March 17th is the deadline for that grant.
All right, board members have any comments, questions for Chief Balderson? Or what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion. We move forward with the grant.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? There you go, Mr. Balderson.
Thank you. I'll keep you updated if we get the grant.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, we back to you.
All right. Next item I have is related to the county gas pump replacement. Over the last several months, we've started experiencing some issues with the... That pump. And best we can tell, after speaking to the sheriff, we are thinking that that pump was put in... That pump and the tank were put in maybe mid-'90s. So what we... In your packet, there were two estimates received from NWP and JF Petroleum. JF Petroleum, we had reached out to get additional updated quotes. We did not get that information. It was not sent back. And they did not provide us an estimate for the dual-wall fuel tank, which NWD... NWP did provide that information to us. There are two items there related to the electrical work. One is for trenching and one is for a direct bore. It's approximately $875... $873 more, excuse me, to bore versus the trenching option. If this is something that the board is interested in moving forward with, we do have some funds in the current budget under 9103, 7,014 that we could actually do this project with. So the total cost, as it stands right now, to do the NWP trenching would be $35,413.26. To do the bore would be $36,266.26.
Give me those two numbers again, please.
So the trenching is $35,413.26. And to bore is $36,266.26.
Sheriff, what is the trenching? Is that for a new line going from the building to the tank?
I would imagine it's for electrical.
Yeah, so they want to run a new line?
Well, yeah, because we have to keep the old pump in service while they install a new one, is my guess.
In your opinion, is there a reason why we should do the bore versus the trench?
I don't think. You're going to cut the parking lot up trenching.
Right.
That's it. And honestly, the parking lot is... Needs resurfacing. So it really does. At this point, it doesn't matter.
Okay. It would save the county 800 bucks?
Well, the patch job may be better than what the surface is right now, so.
All right, pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I was just speaking to Mr. Gregory. If we could pull this under emergency procurement because we have been having some issues where some of the emergency vehicles have not been able to access the fuel... Fuel pump. So with only having the one bid, if we could pull that under the emergency procurement.
All right. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I've got a question.
Yep.
If some means we're looking at doing something with that part of that property over in the future, is there another location for the fuel pump? I guess, Sheriff, would it... Would it benefit you to have it closer to your office than where it's at? Well, I mean, if we're spending the money and doing this, let's look at location and access.
So that does... That does bring up a good point. But I'm not the only one who accesses the fuel pump.
Okay.
So you're going to have county admin, building zoning, EMS with the gas, ambulances, social services. But it may be in our best interest to move it because that gate opens and closes every time somebody gets fuel. That makes sense.
My recommendation is let's postpone this till next month and let's have a discussion.
Okay.
But I mean, I'm not... I don't want to have a discussion. You all have a discussion with all the folks that are using this and see if that is the best location or what would be a better location. That would have an impact on the cost of the trenching and order borne.
Right. Yeah, I'm open to... Just as long as everybody has access, good access.
We definitely got to get a fuel pump.
And it's got to be generator backup. So we got to remember that.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm fine.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
That's my suggestion to the board.
If that was your motion, I'll approve that.
All right, got a motion and a second. Postpone this till next month. Did we find a better location?
Well, let's see if it is a better location.
Or if...
Right.
Which have a way.
It may be a little cost savings in that if it is.
Yeah, because if we are going to do something else, that building, it may have to move in and out again. We don't have to do it twice.
That's what I'm looking at.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, we carry this over till next month. Tadlock?
Next item we have, the board had asked for corrective action plans for those departments related to the forensic audit. That information was sent out. And that information is under the public documents in board docs for the three areas: schools, county treasurer, and the county. So that information is there for your review.
When was that request sent out and when did you receive the information back from the departments?
That information was sent out soon thereafter. The board had requested that. The school divisions, I received yesterday. If you give me a minute, I can see when I sent that to the department. Because I think there were several emails. I think there was an initial email, and then I had to follow up with the actual document. If you want, I can look for that and get that to you later.
All right, gentlemen, you have any other comments, questions for this corrective action plan?
Are we ready to go forward?
I'm not comfortable with the school's action plan because I honestly haven't had time to go through it.
I agree.
All right.
Just got it yesterday. It's kind of hard.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to make a decision on that. And we haven't reviewed it.
Yeah, I got grief, y'all, too.
Couple of so times.
Mr. Williams, I'm glad you brought that up because yesterday it was time enough to look at this. We can postpone this till next month or do it at an earlier date now if we choose to.
Next month. Be good. Yeah, next month.
All right, carried over till next month? All right.
And I'll get the multiple dates for you. I have one here, 1/27 is when one of those was sent out. But I'll get the in-order when they were sent and when they were received.
All right.
All right, next item, the board had requested a grant policy and procedures. There's a draft copy of that in your board packet for your... For you to review.
Gentlemen, did y'all get a chance to review that? Now, we can make changes in this if we see fit. If we were to approve it tonight, we can make changes in this at any time.
It would just, of course, take action by the board. But yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve it as is and let this take effect immediately.
No discussion, I'll second it.
All right, now, any discussion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, not... If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, Mr. Tadlock, there you go.
All right. Next item I have, and this was part of the corrective action plan for the county, is a surplus... Surplus property policy, excuse me. The draft is in your board docs as well.
Gentlemen, you all had a chance to review this? Any comments or questions on this, gentlemen?
Under section 4-A, talking about the advertisement in the newspaper, should there be a timeframe or a time that it advertised, two weeks, three weeks? Should it state that or leaving it open?
Is there a specific time for surplus material that needs to be advertised?
Out there for a week if you require two cycles.
So it's... Okay, and I guess I was looking at some things we do, we have to advertise it two weeks. I didn't know if that would fall under that or not.
That would be consistent with what we do for other advertisements for zoning cases.
I bet if we... Let's be consistent to be on the safe side. You okay with that?
All right, that, all right, rest of the board.
All right, we can make that change. And that's just one option in the list there. So we do have a site, and I believe the sheriff's office does as well. We use a site called GovDeals. And that's a procurement site that we typically use on these types of things. But that... What that does is gives you another option if we decide not to use the GovDeal site. But we can make that change with that.
Okay.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board, then?
I'll move to approve with the change that I mentioned.
All right, motion to approve the change.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? All right. Next, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, along... Excuse me. Along those lines, we do have a... Two vehicles from the sheriff's office that do need to be surplus. The first one is a 2017 Ford Interceptor. And the second one is a 2016 Dodge Charger.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say yes. Say aye.
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 Long night.
Spent a lot of these here tonight.
All right. Next item is the extension office HVAC system. We currently have cooperative procurement with Southern Air. They provide it at the extension office as a boiler system. What that would do is this quote would remove the boiler system and install the HVAC system or not use the boiler system. I don't know that it would physically remove the boiler system, but they would go off the boiler and to... And use the HVAC system. That total cost is $28,730.24.
Actually, they're going to bypass the boiler system and stay in place and they'll just put this in. Gentlemen, I think we need to search for another price yet. I'm not completely satisfied. I think it's a lot of money for what they're doing there. I would like to either talk to them or I will talk to them personally, see if we're getting a better price, and I can get back to y'all, or else we will, uh, seek over bids. If that's all right for the board.
I was getting ready to ask you that. I was getting ready to ask you about that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right. Tedlock, we'll just wait till we can get some conversation.
No, that's fine. Uh, let us know. We can try and coordinate that.
All right.
Next item, I just want to give you an update on the convenience center tags. I met with the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue about the database, uh, related to those tags. The commissioner of revenue has reached out to BMS and American Solutions for business, uh, to get tag samples and pricing. And, uh, right now, we are looking at approximately 9,800 homes. So we're looking at 10,000 tags times two, a minimum of 20,000 tags. So we're still working on that and we'll get additional information to you all as we get that.
Are we, are we talking about tags or stickers?
We're, we're getting estimates on both.
Because I know Richmond County has the stickers and they're having problems now with them being switched around. Where tags, once you put that on a windshield, that's there. That's, that's the end of it. It's no, you don't sell it, you don't give it away, you don't throw it away. It's there. I, I hope we'll have some more discussion on that.
No, we're, we're getting pricing on both, so the board will have both options.
All right, anything else with Tedlock?
Um, next item I have is the board had requested, um, the building official to evaluate the Lots of Bird School in the sheriff's office building. In the, uh, in your packet, you have that information, uh, from his findings. I want to know if you have any specific questions. And I don't, I don't want to put him on the spot, but Mr. Rushing is here tonight, so. And I appreciate his efforts in, um, getting out there and taking a look at these, these two sites, so.
Mr. Rushing, you have any comments you'd like to say tonight, sir?
I don't think I do. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any board members have any comments or questions for Mr. Rushing? While he's here?
That's, uh...
Do appreciate you going by there, sir. All right. All right. Any actions from the board or the board just want to think about this?
Like to sit down some time and we can just sit and discuss.
Think, think about it.
Such a big hurry and we got plenty of time.
We should. Discussion next month.
Right.
Yep.
And I'd like, I'd like to have him in here if he could come because I'm sure there's going to be some questions we might want to ask.
All right. Yeah, that would be the best thing. Get us some time to sit down and discuss this. Kind of hard to make a decision. I don't spare a moment. All right, Mr. Tedlock?
All right, uh, next item, uh, the board had asked, uh, to look at language regarding the use of rifles for nuisance animals. That language is in, uh, your board packet for your consideration.
We have to advertise this?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and basically that is, um, just changing, uh, letter A there. Uh, this article permits the hunting of groundhogs with a rifle of a caliber larger than 22 rimfire between March 1st and August 31st and the hunting of coyotes, foxes, foxes and bobcats with a rifle of a caliber larger than 22 rimfire during established hunting seasons thereof.
What do they allow now? Oh, they allow high-powered rifle?
Not for foxes and bobcats.
Not for foxes, but groundhogs and coyotes.
So the only difference in this language is to include fox and bobcat, is that correct?
That's correct.
There's no daytime, nighttime in it?
No.
Daylight hours?
It, it's no stipulation on, on those. And I'm not sure what the, um, state requirements are.
I've got some deep concerns about some people running around Northumberland County shooting high-powered rifles at nighttime, ground level. The gentleman that came in here, I can't recall his name. Does anybody remember his name that spoke to us that he's a professional at doing this and he does it for hire? He was a local gentleman. I can't recall his name.
One of the Downing Boys.
I don't think I'd have any problem with him. He was, he knew what he was doing. He was a professional. But as far as every Tom, Dick and Harry from Charlottesville, Maryland, DC, all over, coming down here at nighttime and shooting high-powered rifles on the ground, I'm not too sure I'm in favor of that. I think we need to discuss this a little bit.
You know, we don't have to make any changes to this. How many, how many people are hunting foxes and bobcats?
At nighttime, this is.
Or anytime?
That's my concern.
Yeah. How many people do you think we actually have in here, having the county hunting? Not that many bobcats, is it?
Not at all.
Very seldom you're going to see one. Let's, let's kind of put this on the back burner and have some discussion on it before we go any further. If that's all right for the rest of the board.
What county has that?
I think that's what Mr. Fisher wants to do. Okay, the board would just...
It's fine.
All right.
Just hold off on it?
Yeah, just hold off on it.
All right. Next item I have is related to the fee schedule. Currently, anytime that we, um, want to modify the fee schedule, whether it's just one or multiple, that's part of our ordinance and, uh, we have to advertise that, um, even if it's just for one, one fee. We recently had a situation where, uh, we needed to modify that. But we were able to work that within the scope of our, our building permit. One option would be for the board to approve the, uh, fee schedule by resolution, instead of doing that by ordinance. That way, uh, the board would not have to advertise that, uh, if it's just for one or multiple, and, and have that fee associated with that. We would need to have a public, in order to do this, we would need to have a public hearing to rescind that ordinance, if, if the board even wants to consider that.
All right, let's, how many comments does the board have? Gentlemen, maybe a good idea to do this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A minute. I, I would recommend it. Um, a lot of jurisdictions, uh, do it this way and the ordinance would allow you, would state something to the effect of, uh, fees shall be set on an annual basis, in the budget, you know, per the budget schedule or something to that effect. And you would, at the same time you adopt your budget, you would adopt a fee schedule resolution or a fee schedule by resolution. And that gives you the flexibility, you know, it's a public process, you know, people get the opportunity to participate in that process during the budget. But it allows you and your staff greater flexibility to adjust those fees with market fluctuations or changes in, uh, building code or what have you.
Yep. Gentlemen, I certainly think that's what we ought to do. Make this change. Make it easier for us and everybody else, too.
I agree.
All right, motion to make the change?
Yes.
We'll need to have another public hearing on this?
We would need to have a public hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, to rescind that ordinance.
That's right. You have to have a, you have to follow the same process to rescind an ordinance as you would to adopt an ordinance.
So we'll need to hold a public hearing to rescind this, so. Motion is to hold a public hearing to rescind the ordinance.
You would also, at the same time, you would, you would really be an amendment to the ordinance to change the language to allow you to adopt the fees by resolution.
All right.
Can we do that March 13th?
You would do that next month, yeah, March 13th. That's all right for y'all, gentlemen. All right, got a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, and the last item I have is, um, that I would seek authorization from the board to move forward in advertising a request for proposals for both the pre-audit and the auditing services for Northumberland. And that way, that would put that out for, uh, proposals to, to be received.
All right.
A move that we allow Mr. Tedlock to move forward.
All right.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tedlock, you have anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yeah, that was a long one. All right. Any committee reports? All right. I did get, uh, we had regional, no, not regional jail board meeting yesterday. Meeting went along pretty good. Did have a guest there yesterday. Junior Fisher attended the meeting yesterday, said he thoroughly enjoyed it. Uh, the invitation's still open to the rest of the board members to go. So, uh, meets on the second Wednesday of every month at 4:00 PM. Open invitation. Meets on the second Wednesday of every month at 4:00 PM. And if you want to go, let me know. You can, you're more than glad to go. More than glad to have you. Be kind of interesting.
What time was it? 10?
4:00 PM.
Boom, okay.
4:00 PM.
I usually, usually like to leave by about quarter after 3:00 to get there. And Jim?
What's the average, what's the average time? Is the meal?
Uh, it's hour, hour and a half. And, and we can even feed you.
Okay, good.
Which I, which I know you'll enjoy.
Right. Sounds good.
All right. Anyone else have anything?
Let me know how the food is.
All right. Next is, uh, board supervisors items. Gentlemen, y'all had a chance to review the check register?
Yes, I moved that we approved the check register.
All right, got a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, board comments. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Fisher.
School board, one item I'd like to bring up. We have a superintendent of schools here in Northumberland County and we have a assistant superintendent of schools. And I would like to suggest perhaps that when the, the superintendent cannot be here, that perhaps the superintendent would come. Uh, I had a couple of questions tonight for the superintendent and I, I couldn't pass it on to these people. It wasn't in their bailiwick, so to speak. But, uh, maybe this is something we can look into and see if it's convenient for the school board and, uh, perhaps have really good recipitation, uh, when this takes place. Just a thought, food for thought on that.
I agree.
Would be very good to have someone here.
Yeah, man, this, it's important.
I mean, I can get on the phone tomorrow and get my questions answered, I guess, but I, I would really, really like to have them answered tonight.
And we have not met the assistant superintendent yet.
No.
She's been on board for six months. So we need to meet her.
And solid waste, you said we were working on the stickers for that? Yeah.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, Richmond County has seemed to be doing pretty good with theirs. They, they, I couldn't get a definite answer as to how much they have saved when they implemented the program, but I was told it was substantial. I guess maybe they were getting some from Lancaster or Westmoreland, I don't know, maybe they're getting some from Northumberland. But at any rate, they have implemented and it seems to be working over there. Shipping containers, where, where do we stand on shipping containers? We talked to them. They're supposed to be permitted here in the county. Number one, are we permitting the ones that are already here or are we just going to let them slide? What is the procedure on that?
Yeah, that, that's in our zoning ordinance. I don't know if, um, Mr. Marston?
Yes, sir, Mr. Fisher. It, it, it would be a violation for the ones that are on the property, um, to, to either apply for a conditional use permit if the property is owned agricultural.
Just agriculture?
Yes, sir.
Just agriculture.
Yes, sir.
And what about the, uh, we talked about perhaps getting, at least getting the ones facing the highways painted some kind of a color. Are we anywhere on that or is that kind of laying in limbo? We had talked with the board on several occasions.
Yeah, I, I think if they come before the board, um, then that's certainly a requirement that the board could place on that as a condition, uh, for those particular ones.
So there again, the ones that are already there, are they going to stay the way they are?
If, if they are in violation, then a letter can be written, um, with, with notice of where they are. Then, then, then I could cite them for a violation to come before the board of supervisors or remove them.
The ones that are, that were here before the ordinance took place? Are, are they going to be permitted?
They would, they would be grandfathered to be there if they were there prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance and the use of it being a conditional use.
Will they need a permit?
They would not, no, sir.
So they wouldn't get painted?
A legal non-conforming use because it was existing prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
Well, we'll just have to work with the new ones coming in then. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Bryan?
Oh, I got quite a few things here, yes. Oh, who's Carl? Carl? I like he, hearing good stories come back from other departments. I heard this week that you awesome. And, uh, I understand you've been doing a good job with the sheriff's office cleaning up some wires and cables and, and, uh, when they put in the work order, what have you, uh, you respond quickly and you get the job done, so thank you for doing that. Mr. Tedlock, I got some questions that get you to pass on to social services. Maybe someone could be here next month and, um, I'm just curious on some things that I've, it's just one group in the county I haven't really, um, asked a lot of questions of. And I'm just curious, um, my first question is, do they offer some programs like a workforce program or assistance to help or try to help individuals, um, get off of benefits? To try to encourage them to, to get out in the workforce and to, uh, maybe not require as many benefits or any benefits at all? There are a lot of businesses in this county that I guarantee if you go and knock on their door and ask you to have a job opening, that you're not going to get turned away. There are jobs here in this county. We just got to get people in their mindset to want to work again. And I'm just curious if there are any programs out there to help with this. In reading that report, 23.6% of the citizens own Medicare in the county. I kind of like to have a breakdown on the age groups. And I understand that, you know, we're going to have some children, some elderly folks and all. And, um, my third question is, is the fuel and crises, um, funds. And I guess that is to help with heating oil and help with electric bills.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, what is this county's process? I know of some of the other counties' processes, but I'm just curious. And I know we have people in the county that need this help and I just, uh, just want to make sure that, you know, if they need it, they get it. And that's all I got. I was just curious. I was reading through the report and it was just the questions that I had.
Yes, sir. I can get with Jack at Clayton.
And, um, I would like to see, since we're talking about things for the public to do. And Hampton Hall looks... And Hampton Hall looks really good, cleaned up the way it is. But we also have another location in that area too, is Hatches Avenue. I'd like to have that evaluated and some photos taken and see what's left of the beach front and bring it back to the board maybe next month. According to Mr. Beal, Tuesday would be a good day to go down and do all of that in the snow. But that used to be a nice public boat landing down there years ago. And, you know, if it's nothing we can do with that piece of property, that's probably another piece of property that we could get rid of. But if it is something we can do, it's a shame that it's, it's not being used. It used to have some beachfront down there years ago. And it'd be a shame not to utilize it if it's available.
You're right, we're looking for water access.
Yeah.
Check out everything we can?
Yep, that's all I got for right now.
Mr. Long?
Yes, Mr. Gregory, have you had a chance to meet with the attorney from the school board recently?
I have not met with him, I have communicated with him on the phone and via email, and we discussed the option that we had discussed before for that piece of property. And he has not heard back from the school board at particular idea, yes. But we do, but he did ask that, or proposed that we open up a dialogue, including small representatives from this board and that board. He suggested the chairman, Mr. Tadlock, and myself to meet with the superintendent and the school board chair, and I would recommend that we take a little have a discussion to resolve that.
Yeah, I, I think we really need to be starting moving on that. We, we're beyond dragging our feet on, on that situation. Mr. Tadlock, the ordinance behind people for the county.
Yeah, as far as that, it, that did not come back favorable from the FBI as far as that ordinance. But that does not mean that we can't still send in for background checks, it's just related to the state of Virginia, the state police background check is what we've been using.
The last thing, I would like to see us bring all the land that the county owns, have it at the next school, next, next meeting. Some of this land can be used for some positive things for the county, you know? Like I pushed for in the past, we wanted a few counties don't have fast food. All the other counties around us have, have them, you know? And some other things that we probably could come up with for the county. Maybe tennis courts on each end of the county, some of the land we have and some other things, activities that we could have for the county and for the adults and young, young people. So if you could bring that information back to the next meeting, I sure would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I want to piggyback off of Mr. Fisher a little bit, because I am disappointed and aggravated that the school board and the superintendent have chosen not to participate in the joint finance committee meetings. They've, they've cut off that line of communication. I think it's going on three meetings in a row now, the way I remember it. And on top of that, tonight they send us two ladies, and this is no disrespect to them, but they are not capable of answering the questions that we have for them. Another representative should have been here, likely the assistant superintendent. All these meetings that they're missing go a long ways towards our budgeting process. And when they're here, we're able to iron out some of the bumps in the road that we may encounter later. The first thing they're going to throw at us is that we have not adopted the budget. We got the budget calendar here in front of us. Adoption day is May 15th if we hold true to that date. They're going to say, well, you haven't adopted the budget, we can't issue our teachers' contracts. Well, get your butts in here and talk to us, let's work this stuff out.
I, I don't think, correct me, Mr. Chairman, if I am wrong, but the way I read the letter from the superintendent of schools regarding the meeting with yourself, another supervisor and the school board people and the public, my understanding is they don't ever intend on coming back again. Is that my understanding, or am I wrong, sir?
They actually voted not to attend that meeting in their board meeting last.
Mr. Tadlock, would you pull that letter up?
And they are hoping to approve their budget in March. So if they approve it in March, we will only get there probably sometime in March or April.
Also, what kind of budget are we going to be, be receiving from them? Are we going to see a budget, or are we going to receive the usual stuff that we've been getting?
And, I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
I'm, I'm pretty much done, Dan.
Two ladies here tonight, we got, you know, one lady that was here, I think both of them been here like six months. And it's, it was, they were put on the spot to come tonight, but I'm glad they come, at least someone showed up.
They were kind of thrown to the wolves potentially, and it's no disrespect to them at all because of the amount of time they've been in the position that they're in.
No disrespect to them. Does look like school, at least one school board member could be here tonight.
Well.
Right. I, I, I agree, you know, we had to really put before them, yeah, they'll, for us to have a good school system for the kids.
Well.
For the community. Not showing up, trying to work these things out.
It's not good. And I'm going to be honest, I'm going to put this over here now because this is the best opportunity to do it. I've been asked to bring before the board that we put on the, for it to have to be voted on by the public, that to go back to have an appointed school board. And I think we need to, if the citizens are requesting it, I think we need to do that and let the citizens decide whether they want an appointed school board or a voted school board. Because, and I know some don't agree.
No.
Some may agree. But I'm just saying, you know, I've been asked, and it's, you know, I think it needs to be voted on.
I think, I, I don't agree. I think it should be left up to the citizens.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let them vote on it.
Right.
But we need to put it out there for it to be voted on. We need to have it out there on election day, on the ballot, to be voted on. We don't need to decide that.
Right.
But we need to give the citizens an opportunity to voice their opinion, one way or the other, on what they would like to see as far as with the school board. And it is up to the citizens. And that is a motion.
All right, got a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Got any other conversation?
State your motion one more time, please.
That the board approved tonight to have on the ballot, this, I guess, this coming November?
November.
To have the citizens vote on, one way or the other, to have an elected school board or to have an appointed school board. Let it, let the citizens choose.
Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments on that?
Well.
Well, I, I have not researched this, this is the first I've heard of this, so I, with respect, I, you know, would like to research the process and come back and, after consultation with Mr. Tadlock and we'll come forward with a suggested process to achieve this, but I believe you'd have, I mean, I, I, I just don't even want to speculate as to what that process might be right now, but see what it is and I'll come back.
I agree. I think we should let Mr. Gregory do some research before we make a decision. Probably next month.
Would you be okay with that, Mr. Brand?
I will withdraw it until next month, but I will bring it back up.
All right. All right, Mr. Brand, you have withdrawn your motion, we'll discuss this at March meeting.
Yes. I, I just, I think it's time for decisions to be made to, to get this thing back on track.
Yeah, we spent a lot of comment over here on this.
Yes.
Lot of comment. All right, Mr. Tadlock, that letter coming from the school system about not attending the meetings.
Yes, sir.
Was that a financial meeting, wasn't it? Would you read that out so everyone can hear it?
Does everybody know what the meeting is?
It's the financial meeting that we have with, we were having with the school system, and it had, let's see, myself and Jimmy, Ms. O'Beir.
Mizzie, Ms. Mizzie?
Yeah, Ms. Mizzie.
Karen Pika and Lynwood Blizzard.
Karen Pika, Lynwood Blizzard.
Superintendent and county administrator.
Superintendent and Mr. Tadlock were there, and we were here to discuss the finances of the school system in order to try to keep a budget going, in order to try to work out the budget. And they have refused to attend any more meetings.
And we had approximately, how many successful meetings prior to her refusal?
Three. Three?
Well, my, my problem, why a small committee and not the whole school board and the whole Board of Supervisors?
This was a subcommittee of that.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we need a subcommittee. I think we need to, if you're elected to a position, you need to be here, that's some of that.
Well, that's what we all appointed the day that we had both, both boards here. We all adopted it together.
It's not working.
Mr. Tadlock, would, would you read that?
All right, so this was in reference to, we had several attempts as far as holding the joint finance committee, but due to weather and other circumstances, we had to cancel some of them. But this was one of the, the letters. And I guess to put it in context, I can read my letter and then read the response. Good morning, Happy New Year to everyone. This is just a reminder of the joint finance committee meeting to be held on January 7th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom. Please find attached information that was previously sent out with the updated agenda reflecting the changed meeting date. Sincerely, Luttrell. And that was sent on December 5th at 2:57. And on, I'm sorry, the initial email went out, this was several iterations of this, that particular email went out January 3rd, 2025, excuse me. The response was received January 4th. Hello, Mr. Tadlock, Happy New Year, and I hope you and your family enjoy the holidays. The school board declines the invitation for the joint finance committee meetings 2024 through 2025, including January 7th, 2025. As stated previously, last year's joint finance meetings were unproductive. The meetings led to misinformation and a very late budget adoption. I am corresponding on behalf of the school board. Per this email, the school board will not be in attendance on January 7th, 2025. Please reach out if you have any questions.
Who was this from?
That was from Dr. Wargo. And again, that, the initial email was sent January 3rd and the response was January 4th.
Well, we just had a meeting last.
Last?
Last week.
Yeah, last week.
And we had a productive meeting. Didn't have any, no representative, no representative from the school system was here, but we still had a productive meeting.
We had one representative in there, probably.
Yeah. Did have, Mr. Kearns was here, he didn't, he didn't speak, but he was here. So we did have, did have attendance that way. But as for someone to be speaking, we didn't have anybody. Our next meeting is on the 5th of March at 5:30 PM. So we're going to hold another meeting, and we're going to, we're working on a budget. You know, we got to get ready for a budget, and we do need school input and we need information.
When is the meeting between the boards? I mean, we have had meetings between the school board and the Board of Supervisors.
You can come to last one.
I'm talking about the total board.
That was it?
We haven't had one of them for a good while.
That's what we need to have. I mean, these people in these positions, just like us, I mean, you're supposed to be representing your district plus the whole county.
That's why this, why this committee was formed, so the two boards would not have to meet.
Well, you need, the two boards need to meet.
I, I think that.
You can't talk for me and I can't talk for you because we don't think alike. We think, think different. I need to be able to say what I think and listen to what you say. The two boards need to meet together. I mean, we're here to educate the kids, you know?
We were meeting every quarter on the, on the joint boards, and we haven't had that quarterly meeting yet.
We need to push towards it.
I think they voted in their meeting, last meeting, not to attend any more of the joint finance meetings. They voted on that.
Who, who?
School board.
School board voted.
Jerry, Mike?
Mr. Long, I agree with you that we are here to educate the kids, but we're also here to spend taxpayer dollars wisely.
Right, that's where we need both boards here. I mean, two or three can't represent a board, I mean, you got, this is very important.
Sure is.
It's very important.
Well.
So they'd need to realize they're supposed to be doing a job just like we are, you know?
Bring it up. Mr. Williams, you have anything else?
I do, one more thing on a much later note. Docks of the Bay, which is the company that we hired to remove the derelict vessels, they're going to remove the final vessel in the Little Wycomka River beginning February the 24th, so soon, weather permitting.
Yes.
Just an FYI.
And we'll be glad when we get that one out of there too. The others have been removed and we'll tick them, just get them out.
And that's it.
All right, Mr. Brand, you have something else?
Ms. Packet?
We're going to have a little discussion on this mapping, Sheriff Beecham, mind coming up?
So, I'm not sure when the actual last mapping system was purchased, but on or about September of 2023, GeoCom, which is the new company, project kicked off with a tentative go-live date of November of 2023. In January 2024, all of my dispatchers completed training and that was sent to them. In February of 2024, I started sending emails about the concerns I was having about this system and not being user-friendly for, in a 911 emergency role. Most of these emails were sent to some or all of the following, Luttrell, Drew, Stewart, Robert, and GeoCom. In most, every email, I stated that it was not user-friendly in an emergency situation. The road names have to be spelled out exact in order for us to find them, and it's not a good situation when you're in, when seconds could matter. On our system that we use now, that's very outdated, it cannot receive any more. It cannot receive any more updates on it. So we, any new resident or any road name that's been added since we went live on this new mapping system, we cannot find you. So if you live at 123 Main Street and that was, you know, built after that, we're not going to find you. I asked in February 20 of, 2024 about this, and I was told by GeoCom that they do not offer the type of system where we could search by road names. Some of the dates that I sent emails were February 26th, 2024, March 28th, 2024, July 23rd, 2024, October 4th, 2024, October 10th, 2024. With the old mapping system, like I said, they're not getting there. We actually had some road names that were put on there in 2017 as new roads. And as of 2024, when we went live, it was not on there. And Sheriff Beecham even delivered some of those road names over to the county office in February of 2020. There's several road names in our counties, in our county that are distances away from each other. I'll use Deer Run Road in Calio and Deer Run Drive, which is in Swan Harbor, very long distance away. We had a heart patient call typed in Deer Run, squad went to Swan Harbor. The patient was in Calio. So those seconds could have mattered. I've, in December of 2023, I requested more training and we would be referred back to the training the way that we already did. The maximum time of this training per GeoCom was an hour and 20 minutes. I did not, and I still do not, understand how one is supposed to know how to operate in an entirely new system with a little bit of training as that, as such. On January 20, on January 30th of 2025, I requested the GeoCom come out to meet with us, and the response I got was they have a training portal online. On February the 11th, I again requested an on-location meeting to discuss the issues. At that time, GeoCom asked what days and times were available. My opinion is that they still want to meet online and not in person. She then stated that they could come up with an alias road name table, which I'm not sure if that would even work. Our current CAD system does have a mapping feature, however, it is not accurate. I'll, for an example, there, it lists a cross street for Walmsley Road, I mean, Pole Ficket Road, I'm sorry, as Northumberland Highway. Well, Pole Ficket Road intersects with Walmsley, not Northumberland Highway. In our experience with different systems, the only one that we've had any say about what company or software to get was our current CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatching, in which we initiated that process. We often have people just showing up at our building and putting equipment in, and we have no clue about it. While this is off-topic about our mapping system, since we went with Code Blue phones, we had, we had no input prior to getting the system. We have the old phones on our dispatch consoles, so we have multiple phones on our consoles. And we have to pick up if somebody's at the gate, we have to pick up somebody if they're out on the phone, if we have to call Luttrell's office. We have to pick up three different phones and try to reach someone. As of 4:30 PM today, our mapping system is still not work, a new mapping system is still not working. They did state that the server has been offline since November, and they were working with Robert, but that's just the login and that's not the actual function of the system. We need a solution, and it's, in my opinion, necessary, so we can find where these people are in their time of need.
How much training did you get?
It's about an hour and 20 minutes in videos, and it's all online.
All right, and you also stated the server had been off since November?
Yes, according to the mapping company and.
And this is February?
Yes. And the email that she sent me today or yesterday was that it had been off since November, and then Robert has been working on it today with them, or yesterday and, and today, but they still can't figure it out. But that's still not going to help our function. If you were to call 911 from your house, it's going to give me a radius. It's not going to zoom to your house. Myself, with some experience, I know where you live. However, you know, I have eight, you know, eight other dispatch, or nine other dispatchers, they're not going to know where you live. And so if you don't, can't zoom, you have to zoom, 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 and those seconds do matter.
So is this GIS mapping system, is what it is and you're using it for 911? Or is it a 911 mapping system?
We can't answer that. Why can't?
I, I think the original mapping is, was GIS and we're using it for 911. That's the old map that we're using. My understanding is the new mapping is a 911 system map, not really GIS.
But it don't work.
It, it does not. Not to our standard that we need it to function.
And that, that is the first line of emergency response, is knowing where to go. So I, I met with Jennifer and I've requested a meeting with someone from his company. I don't want them on the phone, I don't want them showing up on the screen, I want them here. They need to sit down, all of us, the sheriff wants in that meeting. They need to listen and see what their system is not doing. If they cannot provide the service to this county, we need to find another service. And whether the service is going to be provided, if a 911 dispatch center is going to rely on it for public safety, they need to have a say in what they're using.
How long has this problem been going on?
Well, I've been trying to get it fixed. We went on around September of 2023, the project kicked off, but I don't know when the actual system was purchased. And with a tentative go-live date of November of 2023, and I've been emailing since February of 2024. So we were two months in, three months into the project, or go-live, and I voiced my concerns that this was not feasible for our situation.
Basically, you haven't got a good reply yet. Or haven't got satisfaction, I guess is the way to put it.
Most emails I don't get responses to. And on February 26th, GeoCom said it was not possible for us to get, like, like now if I type in Main Street, it'll pull up every county, every road name in Northumberland County that has MAI. You know, so we could, you know, pick it up, whether it's Main Street or Main Sale Court. I, I showed the sheriff this morning, it is on my, you know, how it looked on my computer. However, we can't get 911 calls on it, we can't even log into it on the consoles anymore. And it pulls up Washington State, you know, all different things in, in the United States per se. But like I said, most, most of my emails went to Luttrell, Drew, Stewart, Robert, and/or GeoCom.
And we're just hearing about this, this board's just hearing about this.
Yes. I've been trying to get a resolution and it was time that, that it be brought out.
I think we need those folks here next week, the week after next.
What was that?
I think we need to have a meeting with them, try to schedule a meeting with them here next week.
Next week, we'll be fine.
Certainly don't procrastinate.
This has to be, this problem has to be solved. It's gone on two day gone long. It's a shame the board has to step into it, try to get it straight. This board's going to, going to end up getting this straight one way or the other. So can we get a meeting set up? Jennifer, Jimmy, who, I don't know who wants to set the meeting up.
I've requested it, and like I said, the, the email that she responded back, I believe it was yesterday, because initially she said that we would, they would send some more portal training. I'm like, that's not the purpose, I want someone here.
Mr. Tadlock, you have any input? You want to set a meeting up or you want us to do it?
No, I'll certainly reach out to GeoCom.
Reach out, tell them we need a meeting within a week.
And just, just.
An in-person meeting, not a virtual meeting.
Just for clarification, there have been several iterations of mapping systems. The, the current one is GeoCom.
Yeah.
The last one that we had was GeoCom, and they modified the, the software. So that's the, and it's made for dispatchers, dispatching. It's not the GIS side that Stewart would see on his side to actually do.
GeoLink is what we're using now, which is old. And like I said, the, any new structure that's been, or any new road name, I'll, I'll use an example off of Monday Point Road, is Courtney, there's Courtney Lane now. So if we look up Courtney Lane, we're not going to find them. So we're going to say, sorry about your luck, we can't find you. It's not in our county, because it doesn't come up on our map. And it, so any new house or any new road name is not on our current map.
All right. When was this software upgraded? What was the last upgrade date?
Oh, the last.
I don't know when it was purchased.
I'd, I'd have to look back at the, the contract when that was brought to the board. I'd have to look at all of that.
Can you, can you get all that pulled for the board members?
Yes, sir.
And then, and all the upgrades and all, so we know the dates of where.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
I'll read that one.
All right. Mr. Brand, you have anything else?
I'm done.
All right, thank you all. Any other board comments? If not, I'm going to suggest we have a 10-minute break, then we come back to public comments. All right, with the board?
Sounds good.
Ladies and gentlemen, call this meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is the public comment period. First person I have on the sheet is Matthew Smith.
He's gone.
He's gone. Lake Cat's gone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Suzanne Smart. I reside in Heathsville, Virginia. And I am here this evening to share some information with you and to, to urge you to action. Last night, I attended the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board Meeting, which was held in Warsaw, Virginia. There were comments made last night by various speakers, and they detailed numerous abuses at the jail, including food that is inedible, contaminated with insects and feces, inmates being stripped and then denied clothing for hours while made to sit and wait in a room, denial of a cup to hold water for drinking, denial of soap, attorney and climate privileges being denied, limited, and intercepted, inmates being cuffed, shackled, and then used as a battering ram into a door where blood is splattered on the door and on the walls. I could go on and on and on, but you all have already heard these things, because this has been brought to you before. It has been brought to the Northern Neck Regional Jail before. You can find the evidence of this online quite easily if you do a search. What I do want to talk to you about are the comments that Mr. Darrell Fisher made at the end of the meeting last night. Mr. Darrell Fisher is the chairman of the Board of Supervisors of West Moreland County. He is also the chairman of the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board. These are direct quotes from him last night. Quote, "This is a well-run jail operation. We pass all the audits, all the inspections, where they relate to food service preparation, how we treat, how we handle the inmate population." Quote, "It has been, become disturbing to this chairman that there is just one component that we have heard from consistently with a complaint. The conclusion that I have come to in listening and digesting is that the representation that come do not have the general welfare of the public in mind. There is a completely different purpose." Quote, "To the staff that's here, you do a great job. We, as a board, have full confidence in the job you have done, what you are doing now, and we believe that we have a good team in place moving forward." Mr. Fisher then proceeded to thank the jail board members and to congratulate them on a consistent job well done, saying, quote, "We run and manage a great facility down here at Northern Neck Regional Jail." Those are all direct quotes from the meeting last night. I think I am being gracious here when I say that there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between the many firsthand accounts of alleged atrocities being committed at the Northern Neck Regional Jail and those who run and manage the regional jail. As a taxpayer and as a citizen, I am very concerned that inmates in the Northern Neck Regional Jail have been denied their basic rights. We, as a county, and you, as a county board, have an obligation to oversee the Northern Neck Regional Jail and to ensure that it, as an institution, does the job it is intended to do without infringing on the human rights of those who are incarcerated there. And equally importantly, that the constitutional rights of those who have not yet had their day in court is not infringed upon. So my question to you then is, what are you going to do? You cannot continue to do nothing. This is not going away. I believe there needs to be an independent and external audit of the jail, of its operations. There needs to be more independent oversight of the jail. And I would like to second the chairman's request and urge you to please attend, as board members of Northumberland County, to please attend the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board Meeting next month and the meetings that follow. I think that that is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
What day is that meeting on again?
All right, I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak?
It's the second Wednesday.
I'd just like to put a little bit of icing on what she just pointed out. The comment that Mr. Fisher made yesterday about only hearing from one particular component, I believe is the word he used, it was an inappropriate word, but there's a reason for that. So we had a group of, of detainees, meaning they hadn't been tried, who were in there, but because by virtue of the, the way that they got there, they ended up getting a voice. They were able to say what was going on. And today, we know that it's not really so much about them. They just shined a light on what was actually going on, that we all sat home happy and watching our TV shows every day, not even thinking about. And now we know that it's going on. Now, the general public probably is still in the same boat today. They go to work nine to five, they come home, take care of their kids, and quite honestly, they can't really pay attention. But the last thing in the world we need is for the primary mechanism that is, makes up the biggest part of the first 10 amendments to the Constitution, to actually go out the window when somebody is actually in the system that those amendments were written for. It has to be addressed. And what I would do is to enhance her call for you guys, is say, yes, y'all need to show up. Just show up. Everything else will follow. More importantly, and as an extreme suggestion, I'm not saying that you go off and do this stuff, maybe pull Northumberland County out of that, that jail. I don't know what it would take. There's been questions asked about how much that would cost, but it's not good. I mean, we used to be able to handle our own here years ago. I don't know how, how the, the. I don't know how, how the, the per capita incidents went up to where we couldn't handle our own. But things over there can't, can't continue. They just can't. And I, I don't wanna see Northumberland County continue to be associated with it, because it's not gonna get better from here. It really, truly isn't gonna get better from here. From a PR perspective, from, and I, I can't even imagine all of the legal things that I'm hearing about and seeing going on that are coming. It, it's, it's not pretty. It's truly not pretty. And I think Northumberland County needs to maintain some honor. Because right now, I think you guys are about the best set of supervisors that, that are even involved with it. We got Al to show up yesterday. I don't believe I've ever seen a supervisor from another county show up that wasn't actually sitting at, at the table.
I've been there more times than you can count. Not for that.
Different context. But you understand what I'm saying. And I think I'm probably gonna run out of time, so I'll leave it alone. But it's, honestly, all the other things aside, it's damned embarrassing what goes on over there.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know all these things that they're claiming. They could very well happen, as far as I know. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. But I sit back and listen to, to all the comments last night, negative comments about the jail. And the people had heart-wrenching stories, so to speak, of what took place to them. And I, God in heaven, I hope that didn't happen. I, I don't know what else to say. But my point is this. Of all the hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people who go through that jail since about, I think, what, 2000, Sheriff Beecham?
Nineteen ninety-five, twenty-four.
When did we go up at? About 2000?
The first, the first bylaws were authorized in 96.
Again, I say, all those hundreds of thousands of people that have gone through that jail.
Yes.
And there must have been others that have had problems.
Yes, there have been.
Where in the hell are they at?
The mechanisms of getting the word out, you can imagine that if, if, if you were the other person that got a ride to the jail, um, the circumstances are not necessarily such that you're gonna be able to speak out very loudly. These guys, so there's a vigil every Friday, um, it gets online, they're making phone calls and getting information out. It's not like it used to be. More importantly, there's the, I'll just be blunt with it. The political environment was highly visible. It wa, it was difficult for, for anybody to keep a lid on that at this point. So, literally, what I, what I was saying is that years have gone by. We can infer, we can't quantify, but we can infer that there's been bad things going on for a very long time. In other locations, for example, the DC jail, we have corrections officers that are saying, "You know, you guys are doing a really good thing here. I don't know how you're doing it, but you're doing it." That includes inmates as well, going, "Now you're getting it out there. The system is freaking broken." And it's broken on a huge level. And one of the points I tried to make last night was that, I understand that they've got huge challenges. I do. You know, they hire somebody for $50,000 a year, and then they wonder why they don't stay, and then they probably need to question any reasons why the people that do stay, stay. You know, when you've got a, a turnover rate like they've got, you gotta start wondering, "You've been around here for three years. The average expectancy of employment around this place is two. Why are you still here? Why haven't you turned in a resignation or something?" Because the reality is, is it's an ugly environment to work in. And that's one of the biggest reasons that they lose people. People go in there and they see things going on. There's a gentleman that used to work there, wrote a book about what goes on in there. And he even names Mr. Hall in his escapades from decades ago. So, there's no clean and simple answer. There's a lot of upstream forces that are contributing. I was telling somebody day before yesterday that there's a lot of changes we wanna see. But the reality is, is that one location isn't going to be able to address all of them, because there's forces at the state level, at the federal level. And honestly, it, it's, it's a challenge to get anything to happen. But the other part is, is that there's a cultural component. We have Ms. Michelle Lewis. She's the new sheriff in town. The old sheriff, if you knew him, he's not a good guy. And with that is a culture. There were things that were overlooked. I've got some documentation from, from his stuff that would just blow your mind. And on the other side, you've got this gal who comes in, and she's trying her hardest in a system that's bucking against her to clean it up and, and make things more transparent. She hasn't been successful to a great degree yet. She's only been there for a little over a year. I see the effort. I also see what she's pushing rope uphill with. It's, it's tough. The idea is to change the culture a little bit over there so that when a CEO decides that he's a little bit frustrated with his wife, he doesn't take it out on an inmate that hasn't even had a trial yet, and he's not guilty, because he hasn't had a trial. And that's really the, the complexity of the whole thing. So you get some people coming in, and, and I'll be honest with you, Al, the reputation that Northern Neck Regional Jail has is legit. The next one in line would be Petersburg, as far as having a bad reputation, but the difference between the two is pretty strong. The other part is, is, as I pointed out yesterday, Northern Neck Regional Jail spends about 51% of the amount that the rest of their sibling jails and institutions spend. The people that pay for that are the inmates. Now, a, again, when I use the word inmate, you know, we all know that there's people that actually deserve to be in there, right? And they really need to be in there. They need to be put in a cage and never interacted with again. Our biggest concern is the people that haven't even had a trial yet, and they're being deprived of their basic rights. I don't want any, any, I don't, tip, I don't want you accidentally have one too many and end up in that jail. It's, it's, it's horrendous. I, I, I know that there were some passionate feelings after everybody was done yesterday. I can't just say no. I mean, this is, this is a fundamental thing that we have to kinda stand up for. It's, it's, it's big for as quiet as it has been. It's really big for as quiet as it has been. I'll leave y'all alone.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Surprise. Surprise me too. I have to speak since I'm, I'm the one that's mostly involved with NNRJ and the people who are in that prison. Been going to the board meetings for years, saying the same thing every month to these people. And they just look at you like, "Okay, thank you." And they don't believe what we tell them. Now, back in November, not November, September of last year, I brought in the letters that these guys write me. I had showed everyone. It was over 100 letters. And if you look at these letters, you can see at each letter, they say the same thing, how the food was, how they had to paint the walls of that jail before they had inspections to get the mold, so that you, they couldn't see the mold. They had, they were instructed to do that. It's really disgusting. And the person who was there yesterday, Chris, he stayed two weeks at our house. So we know him pretty well by now. I mean, we only knew him by the letters and phone calls that we received. But after him staying with us for two weeks, he's a good guy. He's strong, he's tough, and he told us many times that if it wasn't for me writing to him, he'd be dead. He'd be hanging from a sheet. And he told me that many times. And for these guys, people at the Northern Neck Regional Jail to just push it aside and say, "No, that never happened," it's really disgusting. And now next month, I had a phone call today from another person. And he's gonna be showing up next month at the Northern Neck Regional Jail. And he's thin-skinned. He's thin-skinned, meaning he's not as tough as Chris. Chris can, he was tortured so much that he's tough. And, but this other guy, Todd, he is very sweet and, well, they're both sweet, but... I just hope that people listen to him and listen to his story because, and believe what we are saying, because it is heartbreaking. And if anybody wants to read any of these letters, I'd be happy to show you all this evidence that they showed, showed me over the last year or two, whatever how long I've been writing to him. But if it wasn't for these letters, that's, that's, that's their support. That's the support, we're the support system for them. And they would not have made it without getting letters and communicating with others from the outside. And something has to be done about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Debbie Evans. I'm here as a resident of Heathsville and also the treasurer of the Westmoreland Players Theater on Richmond Road in Calio. We're inappropriately named, I've been told. We started out as a traveling theater and mostly in Westmoreland County. And now we're afraid to get rid of our name, because everyone knows us that way. But we came to the zoning and permitting in order to have our sign changed.
Uh, wait, uh, hold on a minute. Westmoreland Players, that's your public hearing. Give us just a few more minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, anyone else like to speak in the public comment period? All right, do we have anyone that's in the virtual world tonight would like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world would like to speak in the public comment period?
Morgan, have anybody?
Would anyone in the virtual world tonight, or online, whichever way you wanna call it, would like to speak in our public comment period? Got your hand raised? Can't hear 'em yet. Can't hear anybody yet. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, so Morgan can let you, let you speak. Somebody? Somebody else? Just one?
What kind of problems they having?
I don't know what kind of problems they having.
That may be somebody we wanna hear from.
Yep, I'll ask one more time, real quick. Anybody in, anybody online would like to speak tonight? If you do, say something, please, or else I'm gonna be closing the public comment period.
Why are we waiting on that? At the jail meeting, when they addressed this, these concerns, how many J6s were in that regional jail?
Sixty went through.
How many?
Sixty.
And with, and this has been going on quite some time, and I'm kinda amazed that the news media really hasn't jumped on board with this.
I'm not. I'm not amazed by it at all.
But with that being said, you know, something big like this, how come they not?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I'll come back to it in a minute.
Yes, we can.
I so, I so apologize. I was just able to get unmuted. So this is Dr. Karen Leslie. I am the Assistant Superintendent at Northumberland County Public Schools. I just wanted to pop in, and first of all, I, I have been attending your meetings virtually, um, and so I just wanted to let you know that. And I do really appreciate all of the invitations that you all have given out this evening. I, I would love to come and sit in your meetings. Um, I do wanna be clear that I did intend on attending the meeting this evening. Um, and I did put that offer out, but was told that there were other representatives being sent in my steed, um, and so that I was not to attend. But I do wanna be clear that I am here, I am listening with the wishes of the school board and the superintendent. I would love to be at your meetings and certainly work with you on anything going forward.
Who is this now? What's her name?
Assistant Superintendent.
All right.
Sure, my name is...
I would really appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, sir. Like I said, I...
And I do appreciate the call tonight.
Absolutely, and I have been here, and I apologize, I could not unmute. My name is Dr. Leslie, um, and I have, I've been with Northumberland County about six months. Um, and so I am here, and I am listening. And as I said, had some folks sent in my steed, but would be happy to attend, given that that is permissible with the school board and the superintendent.
Okay. Yeah, we would, we would love to meet you.
I would love to meet you guys too. So thank you, and I appreciate the invitations, as I was listening. Um, I really appreciate that. So, um, I'm here. Should you have any questions, if there's anything that I can do, I'm absolutely here.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sirs.
All right. Anyone else in the, online tonight like to speak? All right, since we have no one else who wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. I mean, the public comment period.
Has the jail done their internal investigations on these acquisitions?
Yeah.
Have they done anything external?
I haven't seen any reports.
We was talking about for the reasons, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, matter of newspapers that come up?
What was the question?
Uh, yeah, the media that come up and...
Um, the Northern Neck Sentinel shows up, but that's as far as it goes.
Oh, I know.
We don't get CBS or NBC on occasion. You'll get somebody from, uh, the Epoch Times or Gateway Pundit that'll, that'll do a report, and they're able to get some information. And I would encourage y'all to, to look into those. I can maybe provide some of it for you.
Northern Neck News, Northern Neck News, that's all those?
No, they don't, no. Just the Northern Neck Sentinel. And even then, it's, it's, it's as scheduled for the release of the paper go. So, reports, now... Oh, yeah, Jen Baker was there last night from the Gateway Pundit.
Who was that?
So... The, the comment was made about a year ago that, oh, we had an inspection, or not an inspection, but we had, uh, an investigation of the claims, and we're happy with what we found. And I said, "Can you show me the report?" "Oh, no, we don't have that." "Seriously?" So, um, and, and that's why I made a comment last, last night about there's a, a really stressed credibility gap going on. Because what we see, and we're told, "No, believe what we say, not what you see." And what we're seeing, and we've got pictures of, of the consequences of what has happened to people. Me personally, I really don't care if it's a CEO that's beating up a guy or the other way around. It's really bad that CEOs do on occasion. I can't tell you when the last time it was it happened. It might have been nine, 10 months ago. But, um, it does happen. And any assertion that it doesn't is, is a bold-faced lie. And any assertion that it doesn't is, is a bold-faced lie. It, it's a problem throughout the entire country. Say that you've got an island over here at NNRJ that's totally virtuous and nothing ever goes wrong is ridiculous. Statistically, that can't happen. I'm just telling you. So it's, it's a ticking time bomb. If it's left unaddressed, it's not gonna go well. And I, I can't even fathom what the fault must not be. It, it can't possibly go well. Something has to be done.
All right. Slom, you have anything else? All right, close the public comment, public comment period. Our next item would be convenient close meeting, but gentlemen, let's put that off until after we get these public hearings out. All right, open the public hearings. The first is requested by Westmoreland Players, Mr. Marston?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Westmoreland Players Incorporated owner to modify a condition limiting the size of a proposed sign to a conditional use permit on property zoned A1 agriculture. Property is shown as taxman parcel 14-1-15A and is located at 16217 Richmond Road.
All right, any board members having any comments or questions for Mr. Marston before open the public hearing? All right, ma'am? All yours now.
Thank you. Again, Debbie Evans, I'm the treasurer at Westmoreland Players, here to represent the corporation. The sign that we have right now was special, smaller than what is normally in the zoning requirements. And we're just asking to be able to do what everyone, all our neighbors are doing, have the same 64 square feet available to us, just like the church down the road has. So we aren't asking for anything that any other property doesn't have. We've had that special, I can't remember what it's called, the special zoning for decades already. And we, we think it should be gone.
Okay. All right, any board of members have any questions? All right, ma'am? Thank you. All right, I have no one on the sign up sheet. Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing? All right, anyone that's online tonight like to speak?
Morgan, do you have any?
All right.
One left?
Nothing, all right. I'll close the public hearing in the matters before the board.
Oh, I was just curious why it was even here because under the ordinance, county ordinance, A1 monument free France standing signs come within their request.
Marston, would you like to comment on that, please?
When they originally came to the board supervisors for the construction of an assembly hall, the board supervisors at that time put a condition on that approval that their signage was limited to 32 square feet.
And I, I think why I was confused on it, that was in 1996 and a different owner.
That's right.
And this was probably upgraded and changed. I'm just curious, it's, you know, what conditions do you have?
The only condition that, that was requested to be modified was that for the limiting it, changing the limitation from the 32 square feet to any proposed sign is shall comply with the sign regulations in the Northumberland County zoning ordinance.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah. So that was a proffer, the 32 square feet when the property was sold the first go around? It was not?
It was a condition of approval.
A condition of approval. And so there's, that wouldn't have to transfer to the next, to the sale of the property?
It runs with the land.
I'm sorry?
It runs with the land.
Okay.
That's, okay. So, I mean, you didn't ask me, but I would just recommend if, if you want to allow it, just go ahead and approve your request as presented, which would make it consistent with existing zoning law.
Good.
All right, any other comments? Pleasure to board.
This motion is made in due consideration of public health and safety and general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices pursuant to the body's statutory authority that this conditional use permit be approved.
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? Ma'am, your motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, help yourself, ma'am.
We're gonna have a very pretty sign.
Yes, ma'am, I know you will. All right. Next public hearing have is amendment, is, is the amendment to Northumberland County Code.
Yes, sir. The next public hearing is to consider amending the Northumberland County Code, Chapter 132, Taxation, Article 11, Tax Relief for Elderly and Disabled Persons. The proposed amendment would increase the total combined income to not exceed $28,000 and the total annual exemption shall not exceed $600.
All right, board members having any comments or questions for Mr. Tadlock for open the public hearing? All right, open the public hearing. I have no one here that's signed up with anyone that like to speak. Sheriff Faison?
Yes, thank you. I, I rise to speak because I think my parents may fall into this and I have a couple of questions. Mainly about the, the exemption doesn't exceed $600 proposed. In the county code now, it does not exceed $400. Does the $200 increase offset the amount of taxes that have been raised over the years since the original ordinance was approved? Does that make sense? So if you raise real estate taxes along the way, is the $200 enough to give these people on fixed income an exemption that they're gonna feel it in their pocketbook? Is my question. And I don't even know if my parents, they're on fixed income. I, I think they will qualify, but I just, is $600 enough, I guess, is my main question for somebody in that predicament.
Mr. Thomas?
Most rural counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia, because we do not have a lot of sales tax and you rely on the personal property and the real estate taxes. So most counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the rural areas, it's anywhere up to more than $600. I checked with other counties to pull this, this and that. And it's not looking at paying at all, it's looking to help those individuals. I know that when we first started off in 2006, we had like 100 and some people in this program. Now we're down to 44. A lot of those individuals have passed away in just in the last several months. Several of them have passed away. So you see it gradually going down. And actually, these people need assistance. Matter of fact, they, actually, I do home service for them all the time because they don't have anybody to help them. And a lot of them don't trust the mail. So I end up in trying to help them. And I really think that this $600 and this $28,000 that I'm proposing is in line with other counties around us.
Okay. Did that give you a good enough answer?
Yeah, I just, just want to take into account taxes raised, inflation, because I know how tough it is on them. And that they pinch pennies tighter than most people. Jimmy knows my parents, Todd knows my parents. You know, most other people are in the same predicament, it's just not my parents. But I saw this come up and I just wanted to come and ask for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone that's online tonight like to speak? Everybody in online want to speak? Anyone online like to speak? All right, close the public hearing, the matters before the board. It's board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion, don't we approve it?
All right, do we have a second?
We have a second.
Got a motion second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, too. All right.
You can hear the board, too.
You're certainly welcome, sir. We have, we have no more public hearings. Our next item would be to convene into a closed meeting. So I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, and Section 2.23711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney and assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary in the presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia For you, Section 2.23712 Act.
All right. Motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? None? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting. I thank y'all for coming tonight. Thank everyone that's in the virtual world.
Southland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Haney, aye. We're back into open meeting now, gentlemen. We do need action on Mrs.?
Ms. Bowles.
Bowles.
Ms. Jennifer Bowles.
Yeah.
That was an increase to her salary in the amount of $2,320.31.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right, you got that now.
And just for the record, that was for certification.
That was for certification, yeah. Stay open or closed, gentlemen? No, we stay open. Yep. Should we stay open?
Unless you have something specific, I would just go ahead and close it and then we can call the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
All right, motion to adjourn.
All right, got a motion on a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, come, Mr. Gregory?
Thank you, sir.